All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment for August 21st, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome. Before we proceed, let's start by introducing ourselves all the way to my far left, please.
Jason Dugani.
Gaspar Bimba.
Richard Tripp.
Crystal Moran, Secretary.
I would be Lynn Perkins, the Chair.
Craig Corbett, Vice Chair.
Jim Dietzel.
And we have Code Enforcement, Carrie Owen with us. And our Clerk Lucy Peoples is in the back. She'll be taking the minutes. Please shut off all cell phones, iPhones, iPads, anything that can create a distraction of the proceedings. In the event of an emergency, please exit the rear of the room. Don't use the elevator, someone will get to you. These proceedings are scheduled to terminate at 10:00 PM as normal, and they are audio-video recorded. That being said, we'll get right into this because we have a busy evening. First case up is 25-121. That is Shaughnessy Allard, P L L C, Gino Sparrow, and Shade Tree Farm, L L C. Got a lot of names there, gentlemen. Your first case is an administrative decision, and I won't tell you how the decision would go, but do you wish to waive that and get right into your variance?
Yes, that's exactly what we were going to ask for.
Okay, very good. So we'll skip Mrs. Peoples, we'll skip case 25-121, and void that out, and go to case number 25-122. Gentlemen, we ask that you read your application for the record as it's presented, and then we'll let you elaborate and put things into your own words, and then we'll barrage you with questions, okay? I'm sorry, again? Yes, you could. Yep, gentlemen, go ahead. Introduce yourselves, and please feel free, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the Board. I'm Brett Allard with Shaughnessy Allard, the Attorney for the landowner and the applicant in this case, Shade Tree Farm, L L C. And joined with me to my right is Gino Sparrow, the Principal of that company. So without further ado, I'll jump into the reading of the application narrative. It's a little lengthy, so I apologize for that. If at any point you want me to summarize or wrap up, just let me know. So the properties in question are situated at 62 and 96 Drew Road. Shade Tree Farm, L L C, is the owner of 62 Drew Road, Tax Map 7, Lot 84-3. Gino Sparrow is the Principal and Manager of the L L C. Gino, in his individual capacity, is the owner of 96 Drew Road, and both lots are located in the low-density residential district. At least 200 feet of frontage is required for lots in the L D R District pursuant to Section 165-48b2 of the zoning ordinance. 62 Drew Road consists of approximately 65.34 acres. 96 Drew Road is situated between the northerly portion of 62 Drew Road and the Drew Road right-of-way. 96 Drew Road consists of approximately 7.05 acres, has a total of 565.30 feet of frontage along Drew Road, and is bisected by the Town of Hampstead municipal boundary. Approximately 128.67 feet of its frontage is located in the town of Dairy, and the balance, 436.63 feet, is located in the town of Hampstead. 96 Drew Road is improved to the single-family dwelling and related infrastructure. The applicant recently submitted a lot line adjustment application to the planning board, and the proposed lot line adjustment is shown on the enclosed lot line adjustment plan. The plan would eliminate a portion of the common boundary between the two lots in the vicinity of the westerly corner of 96 Drew Road, and establish a new lot line running in a northwesterly direction from the Drew Road right-of-way to the common boundary. The effect of the lot line adjustment is to give 1.7 acres of 96 Drew Road to 62 Drew Road, including its 128.67 feet of dairy frontage, so as to provide 62 Drew Road with frontage along the northerly portion. Post-adjustment, 96 Drew Road will not have any frontage in Dairy, but will still have 436.63 feet of frontage along the Drew Road in Hampstead, which is significantly more than both the Dairy and Hampstead require, Dairy being 200 feet and Hampstead being 150 feet. I'm going to skip the next paragraph because it just talks about the administrative decision, which is what led us here. Which is that the variance is required because, based on that administrative decision, post-adjustment, even though there will be 436 feet of frontage in Hampstead, there will not be any road frontage left in Dairy because the lot line adjustment proposes to give the existing dairy frontage of 120-some-odd feet to the back lot. So because there's no frontage located in Dairy, post-adjustment, the only frontage would be located in Hampstead, we need this variance, according to that administrative decision. So criteria number one and two, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest and will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The requirement that the variance not be contrary to the public interest is related to the requirement that the variance be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Any variance will, in some measure, be contrary to the zoning ordinance, but to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. One way to ascertain whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether it altered the essential character of the locality. Another approach is to determine whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to determine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. If you meet one test, you almost certainly meet the others, so we're addressing them together. Granting the frontage variance to allow for the lot line adjustment will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. If the variance is granted, the lot will still have more than double the minimum frontage requirement on a town-maintained Class V road, and nearly double the minimum lot size requirement. The applicant is not proposing any new uses or structures in connection with this application. As such, the applicant is not proposing any new uses or structures that are prohibited by the zoning ordinance or otherwise incompatible with the neighborhood. Granting the variance will not impact the existing permitted single-family residential use of the lot, which will continue, and granting the variance will not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare because the lot will still maintain safe and adequate access. Where the road on both the Dairy and Hampstead side is a Class V public town road constructed to town specifications, and the applicant's lot will maintain the existing driveway and 436 feet of frontage post-adjustment, there can be no genuine concern that emergency responders will be unable to access the site. Therefore, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest and will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, granting the variance will result in substantial justice being done. Supreme Court has held that measuring substantial justice requires balancing public and private rights, and the rule articulated is that any loss to the applicant that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. There will be no gains to the public if the Board denies the variance, there would only be loss to the applicant by denying 62 Drew Road a frontage along the northerly portion, thereof over land of 96 Drew Road, that is currently significantly oversized in both area and frontage. So substantial justice is done by granting the variance. Number four, granting the variance will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. The applicant is not proposing any new uses or structures in connection with the application. The applicant is not proposing any new uses or structures that are prohibited by the zoning ordinance or otherwise compatible with the neighborhood such that the values of surrounding properties could be compromised. Granting the variance will not impact the existing permitted single-family residential use of the lot, which will continue. If the variance is granted, the lot will still have more than double the minimum frontage requirement on a town-maintained Class V road, and nearly double the minimum lot size requirement, so there will be no overcrowding or congested development. Further, if the variance is granted, the applicant will still be required to obtain lot line adjustment approval from the planning board, who will take a close look at the plan. Therefore, granting the variance will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. Number five, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, and unnecessary hardship will be found when the subject property has special conditions or circumstances that distinguish it from other properties in the area, and there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the ordinance as applied to the property, and the proposed use is reasonable. First and foremost, the applicant's property is only one of two properties in the area that has its road frontage bisected by the Hampstead municipal boundary. Further, the applicant's property is the only property in the area that is abutted by a separate lot held in common ownership. Given the location of the existing structures on 96 Drew Road, the only vacant strip of land between the Drew Road right-of-way and 62 Drew Road is the proposed area of adjustment. Individually and cumulatively, these special conditions render the property qualitatively unique in the area. It is precisely the combination of the location of the municipal boundary, the location of the two separate tax lots held in common ownership by the applicant, and the location of the existing structures vis-à-vis the public right-of-way that is causing a hardship for the owner and requiring him to obtain the requested variance. So owing to these special conditions, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the zoning ordinance's requirement that the lot have a minimum of 200 feet of frontage located within the town of Dairy in its application here. According to the Supreme Court, minimum frontage requirements serve two primary purposes. One is that usually frontage requirements can be justified on the basis they are a method of determining lot size to prevent overcrowding, and another purpose is to ensure that a dwelling may be reached by the Fire Department, Police Department, and other agencies charged with the responsibility of protecting the public peace, safety, and welfare. However, these concerns are not an issue here. If the variance is granted, the lot will still have more than double the minimum frontage requirement on a town-maintained Class V road, and nearly double the minimum lot size requirement, so there will be no overcrowding. Where the road on both the Dairy and Hampstead side is a Class V public town road constructed to town specifications, and the applicant's lot will maintain the existing driveway and 436 feet of frontage post-adjustment, the lot will still maintain safe and adequate access, and there can be no genuine concern that emergency responders will be unable to access the site. As such, granting the variance will have the combined benefit of allowing for frontage along the northerly portion of 62 Drew Road over an underutilized portion of 96 Drew Road without compromising the purpose of frontage requirements nor the character of the neighborhood. And the proposed use is reasonable, the existing single-family use of the property will remain unchanged, and no uses or structures are proposed that will negatively impact the area. Single-family uses are permitted by right on this property, and uses permitted by right are per se reasonable under New Hampshire law. And that concludes my lengthy variance application narrative. So to sort of summarize retroactively, we are asking for the lot line adjustment. Gino owns both lots. The purpose is to give some of that frontage for the front lot to the back lot, so that the back lot will have frontage in this area. It is 65 acres, and as you go the opposite way down Drew Road, there's a house down on that portion, there's road frontage down on that portion, but as you go into this portion of Drew Road, there is no road frontage for that back lot. The reason that he wants, Gino wants to be able to access back there is for potential future farming uses, for agricultural uses, pretty low-key stuff, blueberries, raspberries, the low-maintenance type of stuff. He could access from the other side, all the way down the other side of Drew Road, but there's a big wetland right in the middle that would require a wetland crossing from DES, which is preferably avoidable if we can access that area of the lot with the adjustment via the upland on the other lot that's near the road. So that's sort of the underlying purpose of the lot line adjustment. This application, the lot line adjustment application did go to the planning board a couple weeks ago. The planning board determined at that point that it was a matter of regional impact due to the close proximity on the border of the Hampstead municipal boundary, so that was continued, regardless of the planning board process that's sort of running a parallel track to this. Any decision they make, to the extent they were going to make a decision before you folks, which is no longer the case, it would have been contingent upon either the Board agreeing with our administrative appeal or granting this variance, but that's moot at this point. That process is still ongoing. We're here tonight requesting a variance. Again, we're not requesting a frontage variance to allow for less frontage than is allowed, or less than the minimum requirement. It'll still have more than double the minimum required frontage, it's just that frontage is going to be on the Hampstead portion of Drew Road, but of course, anyone who's driven up and down Drew Road knows that on both sides, Dairy and Hampstead, it's a great Class V town-maintained road, up to specs on both sides. So typically, a frontage requirement is, like I said, based on lots being big enough that you're not going to have overcrowding, and having sufficient access for emergency vehicles. Since those are not issues in this case, that's sort of, you know, per se, the uniqueness and the hardship. So with that, I'd be happy to turn it back over to the Board and answer any questions.
All right, so setting aside the intentions and all the case law babble, let's get a better understanding of this. The, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but we're not all intimately familiar with it, though we understand our community. Looking at the cross line between Dairy and Hampstead, is that an easement road access the double line there? What is that? Where the boundary intersects with North Salem Road and Drew Road? I'm looking at this, I can't make it out very well. Is that an access easement?
I'm not sure, I think I need to be oriented.
Did you submit the paperwork?
Yes.
Do you know what the paperwork is that you gave?
Yes.
All right, so where the boundary between Hampstead and Dairy meet on North Salem Road and Drew Road, is that an easement access, the double dotted line?
Double, I'm not sure what double dotted line we're referring to. Yeah, there's no easements on this property currently.
Okay, so that double dotted line is not an easement access?
Oh, that, okay, that's the old plan. I was looking at our surveyed plan.
Well, narrating the plans that you're having instead of giving us case law would be helpful.
Okay, that was, that plan was only submitted in connection with the administrative appeal, that's why I didn't address it.
All right, I think I dug it out of the variance request also. So what is, where is the lot access that your client currently resides at, or owns?
So if you look at the survey, the Northam Survey, L L C survey plan, that was submitted in connection with the variance application, there's an existing single-family dwelling on this property, there's a U-shaped driveway on the property in front of the home, and the Hampstead municipal boundary bisects the driveways in sort of a diagonal manner. And the portion of the property that we're proposing to give to the back lot is that rectangular portion along the southerly side of the lot that runs from sort of that point at Drew Road where the municipal boundary starts, and then runs straight back to the back lot. So it's sort of the rectangular portion of the, at the bottom of that triangle, so to speak.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Is there anybody in the room here that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of this? All right, hold on then. And the intention is, you're not developing the property to build a structure on, you just want to pick raspberries?
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
Sorry, no, I have no intentions on developing it. It's strictly for agricultural purposes. Christmas tree farm, raspberries are already out there. We've also planted blueberries, we're just trying to get it so it's more accessible.
Can you narrate through the purpose of the lot line adjustment, then? What you're trying to do? Why the lot line adjustment? It seems like you could be able to pick strawberries or whatever without that.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Right now, the land is only accessible through 62 Drew Road, which is literally about a mile away through the woods, so getting any sort of equipment or vehicles out there is near impossible, especially with the wetlands. Really, the only way to access that chunk of land is through 96 Drew Road. I'm also looking to obtain that field there for haying, that portion of the field there, it's about a two-acre parcel.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Corbett?
So looking at the survey, the area to be adjusted, I think you're describing, so that, you're looking to acquire that? That's what we're here for today?
So he owns both lots, and what we're proposing is just to adjust the boundary between the back lot and the front lot, so that the back lot would essentially acquire that rectangular portion running out towards Drew Road. That way, he could access the back lot there directly from Drew Road, rather than having to come in a mile down the road over, you know, rough terrain, through wetlands, and that sort of thing.
There's about three wetland crossings you'd have to get through to get to that portion of land, and one of them being that part where the mouse is right there is a pretty significant size. So really, that section of land there behind 96 is only accessible through 96.
And really, in terms of, you know, it's sort of a unique request, and part of the uniqueness is, at least from our position, the fact that we don't think we actually need this variance in the first place, that's the administrative appeal, but obviously, for purposes of this application, you know, we're assuming that we do need it, and if you, it's a little unusual because typically, when folks come before you and they ask for a variance, they're asking to, for an area variance, to create a lot that's less than what's required, or they're asking for a frontage variance to create a lot with less frontage than required, less than 200 feet. We're not asking for that in this particular case. We have 436 feet of frontage post-development. Both lots are a really good size, double the minimum requirement in the case of the front lot. It's just that municipal boundary that runs through the lot, and the administrative determination that the 200 feet of frontage that's required for a lot has to be located in Dairy.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I understand the whole administrative appeal thing, but I don't know to the rest of the Board if it's me, but I have no idea what the ask is tonight. I don't, can you kind of walk us through the survey of what is here today? I honestly have no idea what you guys are asking for.
Well, if I, if I understand is that you want to create a separate lot, but you don't want to build on it.
We're not creating a separate lot, we're just adjusting the boundary between two lots. So there's two lots now, it'll stay two lots.
But you want it to remain essentially agricultural, but you can't establish the lot without the frontage.
Which one's 96? I can't see where it's, it looks like this one's getting rid of it, but where are we
Well, that's a good question, too.
Like, I don't see where we're gaining it, or where it's going, that's what I'm struggling with.
Do you see the area to be adjusted on the?
Yes.
That's, that area to be adjusted, it's sort of a rectangular area? It runs, there's a proposed lot line there? If you look, if you start at the...
Who's going to acquire this? Because it says existing is seven acres, and then proposed will be the, you know, is removing this 1.7, so where is that going? Who, which lot ends up with that one?
The back lot.
Which is which one?
Which is 96 Drew Road.
On this one, is it MAP 2, Lot 38, or MAP 10, Lot?
MAP 2, Lot 38 is the Hampstead portion of the property, so that's a separate tax lot. So really, this property, you know, for the Dairy...
MAP 7, Lot 84-3?
It's MAP 10, Lot 113.
Is the one that we're getting rid of the land on?
Is the one that is giving land to the back lot.
To MAP 7, Lot 84-3.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that portion is that rectangular portion all the way on the left.
Got it.
Which, as you can see, if you track that towards the road, that is all of the Dairy frontage. And then the Hampstead frontage starts at that municipal boundary.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I could not follow that.
That's okay.
By the way, for the record, Mr. Dugani is sitting on this case in place of Mr. Burgess. Was there a question on the left? Anybody? Mr. Tripp?
I have a question. So the entire purpose of this lot line adjustment is to provide access to the back lot, which is 62 Drew, via a portion of the lot that is at 96 Drew.
That's correct.
And the question I have is, you own both lots, and, well, there's actually two questions. You own both lots, and the administrative decision indicates that the transfer of the one portion will make the lot at 96 Drew a invalid?
Well, essentially, and we'll go over to Code Enforcement in just a few minutes, because this is leftover from Mr. Mackey, and Ms. Owen has taken over. But again, this is to create more of an agricultural aspect to the back area, and in order to do that, I believe that they have to have some kind of frontage to create a separate lot.
Yeah, but anyhow, it would seem that since you own both properties, you know, and the goal is to provide access to the rear property, why wouldn't you just give a, create an easement so that you can cross that land to the back property?
Yeah, so I'm also, in addition to using it for access, we also want to hay the field and retain it for our own personal use. So if I had an easement, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have ownership of the land to hay it or to do any sort of agricultural use of the land, it would just be strictly for access. So right now, it's a hayfield, we'd like to keep it that and hay it, as well as use it to get access to the back.
Just to clarify, I think Gino means if he was to sell the, well, I guess, one, we can't do an easement right now because he owns both lots, and you can't give yourself an easement, but...
Is that legal precedent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's Supreme Court cases on that. Two, I think the more, the more pressing issue would be if someday he was to sell this front lot, he would want to be able to retain a fee ownership access over the back lot, rather than just reserving himself an easement, which can, you know, instead of him now retaining his own land for access, he's using someone else's land for access, which can create issues with disputes over the scope of the easement, issues with neighbors. A portion of it would cross, you know, the driveway, so it would be, we think this is the cleanest way to avoid potential future disputes while also having Gino retain a fee interest in the land that is the access, rather than just a potential future easement.
All right, are you satisfied, Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Dugani?
Mr. Tripp, I actually asked the questions that I was thinking about, so that really answered what I needed to know.
Very good. Anybody else have questions? All right, Ms. Owen, you want to give us some feedback on this?
Sure. Thank you. I can give you a little history, I know we're not moving forward with the admin appeal, but what brought us here today is the applicants had come in to speak about the proposal, and based on our interpretation of the Town of Dairy zoning ordinance, when it defines that residential lot is required to have an approved street, so we looked at frontage and public street definitions, and we determined or interpreted that that must mean within the town of Dairy. So that's where the recommendation came in to seek the variance, which is this application. So as it was very well described, the proposal is essentially shifting the lot line over to the bounds. Right now, 96 Drew Road currently abuts, or has property in both the town of Dairy and the town of Hampstead, the town line does bisect through the property, so shifting that lot line to the town bounds would leave zero frontage for 96 Drew Road, and give the 127 and point, 128.67 feet of frontage to 62 Drew Road, which I believe there is other frontage on that property on the south side of Drew Road as well. So, and as was also described, the existing residence at 62 Drew Road is located within the town of Dairy. There is already existing driveway access through the town of Hampstead to access the residence, and then, as we know, the L D R District requires 200 feet of frontage, which we determined would be in the town of Dairy. If the variance is approved, planning board approval would be required, and as the applicants discussed, they did sit in front of the Board a few weeks ago, and I believe are on the agenda for September to return.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Code Enforcement, from any members of the Board? Mr. Tripp?
Does creating a lot with zero frontage, is that something that is permitted by the ordinances?
It's...
We have had cases.
There have been cases, yeah.
In circumstances, historically.
But it's not zero frontage in the sense that we're creating a back lot with no frontage on a public road. So it's, I think there's a distinction, because we're not requesting to create a lot with no frontage on a public road. We're requesting a variance to modify a lot such that its 436 feet of frontage will be in Hampstead rather than Dairy. So I think in terms of zero frontage, that can a lot of times mean there's no access. That's not this case, just to be clear.
And it's just reduced frontage, it's not really, it's no front, it's not no frontage, it's just reduced, correct?
It's a reduction from 565 feet to 436.
Did you say 175?
565 current frontage, and we would reduce to 436.
Okay. What is the new lot frontage?
128.
128, okay.
Which is the...
And, I'm sorry, you said that, am I correct, Ms. Owen? Okay. All right. Tripp, you good?
I, I'm not ready to ask another question.
Okay, good enough. Gentlemen, you have anything else you wish to add?
I believe that's all.
Okay, let's call it, make a call to the public. If anybody needs to come up, they, you'll have to step back, you'll have an opportunity to rebut, okay?
Where are the numbers?
Yeah, let's see where they're going. Anything else?
Nope, that's working.
Okay, very good. Yeah, Mr. Corbett has some numbers to read. We'll announce that at this point, we'll take input from any direct abutters. And first up would be anyone who wishes to support this application. This would be your opportunity to speak and share your thoughts. Mr. Corbett?
Yep, anyone at home who wishes to dial in, you're going to dial 646-558-8656. Your meeting ID is 323-909140. And once you're in, you're going to press star nine to raise your hand. If you have any technical issues, please dial 603-845-5585.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Corbett. Anybody here wish to speak in favor of this application? Seeing no one rise, we'll make the same call. Anybody opposed, wish to come forward? This would be your opportunity. Yes, sir, come forward. Gentlemen, if you could step back for us. Anybody out there, Mr. Preventure, that we need to?
Mr. Chair, we have plenty of attendees seeing none rise at this time.
Very good, have a seat, sir.
My name is Jim Roddy.
Have a seat, please. There you go.
Jim Roddy, 84 Drew Road in Derry, and I am seated now. Is it okay if I pass out a handout to you, to the board?
Why don't you give us a narrative first?
What's that?
Why don't you give us a narrative first?
I'd like to thank you, first of all, you asked some very good questions. It's almost like you and me, living at 84 Drew, that, what I have here will point out where I live. You corrected him, sir, that they mentioned Drew Road in Hampstead. There is no Drew Road in Hampstead. It's North Salem Road, so what would the address be on that house? 84 Drew Road Hampstead? There is no Hampstead or no Drew Road. But I don't care about that. There's no Hampshire, live, free or die, you can do whatever you want. My live, free or die is I live for no noise and no traffic. I guess live, free or die can be a little selective, but I would like to address where I live relative to what the, I believe he's an attorney, just spoke about no impact to the neighborhood. Not sure where he got that. I know there's a couple of us here tonight that are going to ask you, sit before you and ask you to deny this variance, but I would, I would really like to give you this handout so that you can see the perspective of the property.
Is, is the handout what we're seeing on the screen right now?
It is, except I have dots that make it interesting. You can have Owen point them out.
How many copies you have?
Just, I've got about 10 or 11, but I got eight separated for you. I counted.
Okay, we'll accept that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start at this end.
Yeah, I will.
So I want to start off by saying this. I want to be a good neighbor, and I repeat that, I want to be a good neighbor. I think I have been a good neighbor to Gino and he's been a great neighbor to us. The one and only time I spoke to him was five years ago. He was walking the property line, putting up his no trespassing signs, which you have to. I get that when I introduced myself and we spoke for a couple of minutes. And at that point, I asked him directly, what are your plans? Because when I spoke to him, the land was already completely cleared, 100% cleared, with the exception of 10 or 12 oak trees on that massive area that you see there. So he said he had a family member interested in horses, so don't worry, all it's going to be potentially is a horse farm, a barn, some pastures. And he went on to say, we're even talking about maybe something like a wedding venue, horse related, horse barn related. That was a little iffy, but I liked the idea about the horses and all that. I can accept that. You see with the handout that I gave you, I'm the blue dot.
You're the Baptist church?
No, the Baptist church is to the right, the gray dot with the cross.
Okay.
I'm Catholic, not that it matters. If you know anything about Google Maps, when you make a screenshot, when you pull it up, where your phone is, is the blue dot. So I'm the blue dot. You can see where I am relative to his cleared property.
Okay.
Down at the bottom of my picture is a red dot. That's his property of 62 Drew Road. He built four houses there. I'm, I'm going to plead ignorance. If I'm not correcting any of this, I hope someone can clarify it. I think he still owns 66 and 62. So you noted that these addresses we're talking are 62 to 96. And the comment was made that there was no impact to the abutters. If you look where my blue dot is, south of me and north of me, that's 14 residential buildings encompassing 18 families, because a couple of them duplexes. So prior to applying for this variance, I and several of my neighbors never heard from Gino, and he doesn't have to reach out to us. That's the idea behind that certified letter, we know that. However, here's our fear. Mr. Tripp, you brought up a good point. Why doesn't he make an easement of the two properties or keep it like it is? He's already got equipment on that 96 anyway, going back and forth. Or I shouldn't say going back and forth. He's, there are vehicles on 96. A five-minute search on Zillow will show you that he's actively selling the 96 property. Some time ago, 10 months ago, not just, no, six months ago, the ad said 7.1 acres contemporary home for a certain price. Actually, it was 1.125 million, I'm not sure the acreage. And then the price changed on Zillow to 775. And when you went on that ad, it said for another 300,000, you can have 25 acres directly behind the house. So you remember a few minutes ago, he's talking about raspberries and this and that? All well and good if that's his plan. I have trust issues, I'm not sure. His first five years was great, I want the next five years to be great. Memory mentioned the wetlands. I'll be happy to let my neighbor speak to you about wetland issues. We'll be coming before you in the future about that. But you'll see in this, there's already a dirt road that he frequently uses. If it's a farm, if it's farm equipment, if it's tractors, they do pretty good on rough land, they already do. So he can do whatever he wants with his property. My fear is if he sells it. So I'd like to, him to come back up, go on record, because I'll only speak to him now on record, and answer these two questions. Number one, if this variance were to be given, what's your immediate intent with the property? And question number two, what's your five-year plan? That'll give me information to make a rational decision moving forward. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, why don't you just pause for a second there, okay? Mr. Preventure, can you scroll towards the North Salem Road at all on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And, and I think you indicated that Mr. Sparrow bought this about five years ago, correct?
I, I do not know. I think 96 was only in the last two years.
Oh, but it had, I think you've indicated it had already been cleared when he purchased the property.
What is considered 62, that whole big long strip is now considered 62? That initially started up on Route 121, it was owned by Hampstead.
I know it did. I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, which is why I need you to answer the question I'm asking, which is, and I think you alluded to this, is that the land had already been cleared?
Yes.
Yeah, when he purchased it. Because I, it seemed like I could remember several years ago, that land coming before this board for another purpose, and it might have been to clear, clear it, but I'm not sure. You were around that long?
I've been in this house since 1987.
Okay, all right. And would you have been notified of that prior case?
We were notified as abutters certified male of the building permits at 62, 64, 66.
I see, yeah.
My intro to the land being cleared was a fellow buncher coming up to my back wall. I have video to show you. He went down that, the wetlands. See, the wetlands is the green, slightly shaded lighter. He, the fellow buncher came down over the wetland, coming south, took a left and went right to my property wall. I have a video of it. That's my first intro to the land being cleared, six years ago. It started in August of 2019. I know that because cell phones date their videos. So he took a left, came right over to my wall, because I'm in the quote unquote dry area, what used to be dry because the wetland is expanding now. But he came over and the person, to this point, to this day, the person that gave us the most info secondhand was the operator of the fellow buncher. As I stood at my wall and I said, if you look down the lower left of my map that I gave you, it says Webber Town Forest. For years and years, people thought all that was Webber Town Forest. When I used to talk to the apple farmer, I'd say, well, where does your property go? And they'd say, I have a wall way down back. You can walk it, I have a wall way down back. So that wall's gone. Gino owns both sides of the wall now. But that was a beautiful, thickly wooded lot, beautiful tree canopy or leaf canopy, so it's easily walkable. If you go in there now, there are still three trees with tree stands because of the wildlife that was in there. I could put you on my property at the wall. I did notice there's potential for lot walks. I would ask you to include me in on that. You're welcome to come to my property and I'll show you what I'm talking about. So there are three tree stands there. And I think New Hampshire is a lot, you can't touch them for a year. You have to give the owner of the tree stand like a year to come and claim them. I don't think they've claimed them. That's all gone. Wildlife's all gone. Occasional deer aren't like it used to be. And now it's all scrub brush coming up from the ground, no longer is it a leaf canopy, beautiful forest you can walk through. But I'm just concerned that it gets sold because of the act of selling and it won't be raspberries and blueberries and fairy tales. It'll be other people coming before you asking for more variances and more variances and more variances. So I don't want to open the floodgates. He can do whatever he wants with his property with the requirements in place, and I'm perfectly okay with that, even if the next buyer agrees to keeping it like it is. I wish I could keep it like it was, but I'll accept it being like it is better than what it could be.
Okay, I have no other questions. Anybody else have any questions for?
Mr. Roddy.
Mr. Roddy, thank you.
I'm Mr. Chair.
Nope, we're all set? Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else in the room wish to speak in opposition to this?
I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Tripp?
Could you please sit down, please? On the paper you give us, can you approximately show us where Drew and Drew Road ends?
Sure. I'm, I'm not good at drawing and I'm trying to keep my expenses down, I'm not on a limited income. If you look at the 96 property, I have it circled in kind of orangish red, the top line of that property is on a 45-degree angle. That is a very, very accurate depiction of the Dairy Hampstead town line. It goes northwest up, southeast down. The Baptist church is in Hampstead. It's almost directly across geographically, but it's in Hampstead because the property line goes southeast down. So literally right in front of his property, it splits it. It splits his property.
Now, you said the, the blue dot was indicative of your house?
Yes.
And you have that long driveway?
Correct. And I share it with two other neighbors, one of which is here, the other's on Zoom.
Okay, so how far up does, does Drew Road go before it ends?
Well, it ends at that property line at 96 Drew. That northern bound, you can actually see right where it's wooded, right where it's not built on, is the town line between Derry and Hampstead. So Owen, take your arrow, your mouse, put it right on Drew Road. Go straight, a little more, a little more, a little more, right there is the town line. But it doesn't go straight, it follows the 90, right, right. It goes up there and there are a perfect straight line down southeast from that, perfect, just like that. That's the Dairy Hampstead town line. Like I said, the Baptist church is in Hampstead. Just like that is where the property line and the town line. So the house in question, 96, they want, as he stated, that rectangle at the bottom of that clearing is where they want the lot line adjustment, which will transfer it to 62, because on an easement, you can't build a development in past it. Our fear is he's asking for a lot line now, lot line change, and a year from now, he'll sell it and the next people are going to come in and ask to start building there. And let me ask you, you're the zoning board, can you take a lot line adjustment like that and convert it to a road? If they meet all the requirements, all the, all the drainage and lane width and swales, can they take that piece of property and convert it to a road that would lead to 62 to start developing in there? If they can never change that to a road, I'm good with it.
And like- We'd always defer Mr. Mackey on this, and, but I think it's 25 feet. Ring of L to you?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and what's their property, what's their lot line request? 200 feet or something?
128.
128, so well within what would be needed to turn that into a road. So your mind goes crazy when you see that beautiful property back there and it's still beautiful. Thank you, Gino, for the last five years. I love you for the last five years, you kept his word. I'd like his word for the next five years. Our intent is to hand that house to our son. Most of them properties where I am, back then it was two acres required, and most of the properties are front to back, one acre front, one acre in back. Some houses are built on the front acre, as you can see, others like mine, and four of my neighbors, they're built on the back acre. Well, when they're built on the back acre, my wall is now Robert Frost. Good fences make good neighbors. I have a stone wall completely open now that I would love Gino to stand on his side. I'll stand on my side, we'll repair the wall and we'll talk about what his plans are. But we haven't heard anything. We get it in the form of a certified letter. I would have been here for the 60, 62, 64, 66, but that was the middle of COVID and I'm high risk. I was on the Highway Safety Committee, I had to retire from that because for that three-year period, I could not be out in public to say my wife, confirm it. Shame on me for not being on Zoom, shame on me, I should have. But I yelled at the TV a lot, if that means anything. I know it doesn't here. But you see where I am at the blue dot, right up against that wall. I want Gino and his family to be happy. I want, I won't even speak of my neighbors right now, although I love them. I want my family to be happy. I just want us to come to some type of, an agreement where I don't have to worry that he is now going to sell it to someone that's going to come before you and ask you to take this property and convert it to a road so that he can now access that and start building. We know about the wetlands, we know about that, but there's still enough room back there to build and we'd rather not have that.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Tripp, any other questions? You have some good ones.
All set, Mr. Tripp? Very good, thank you very much. Mr. Roddy, anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Come forward, please. Anybody out there, Mr. Preventure?
Seeing none rise, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good. Good evening. Your name, please?
Sure, my name is Danielle Strassler, I reside at 70 Drew Road.
Say again.
Danielle Strassler, I reside at 70 Drew Road, 7-0.
7-0.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so like my neighbor, I have concerns about the future development of that property in the back area. I, about what Gino, I'm happy to call him a good neighbor. His property on 62 Drew Road has a road access to that back area where you can see the dirt lines coming from that into the back plot. It is traversable by vehicle, by ATV, by- coming from that into the back plot. It is traversable by vehicle, by ATV, by dirt bike. Those occur at many hours during the day and they go at high speeds, low speeds adequately. I own a tractor and I know that those roads in that area is traversable by a tractor, so managing a tree farm would be permissible. One mile is an inconvenience to drive on a 3 mile per hour tractor, so I understand it takes quite a while to get there. But I do not see a reason, other than inconvenience, that there needs to be another access to get to that area. I also share the concern that the separation of that new area, that variance, will create a place for a road to be developed, to then develop the back property as new houses, as apartments, as other developments that could impede upon the property value of my neighbors and myself. It could also change the culture and the ambiance of the area, for lack of a better word. We own horses and we bought this property so we would have land for those horses. We have a barn on our property. We also bought the property because we do not wish to be right abutting our neighbors and having, we enjoy our privacy. This would change that variance if there is development back there or it would change that situation if this does get developed. While I understand that it is Gino's property and he should be able to use it as he sees fit, so far as it doesn't affect the public or change the value of the public or impact the public negatively, there are concerns that could lead to that. I am happy to answer any questions about my concerns.
I was well saved.
I'm all set?
Yeah, well saved.
Tripp, you all set? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, opposition? All right.
Seeing none online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Preventure. Gentlemen, come back up. You can rebut.
Thank you. I just have a couple quick points to make based on some of the concerns we heard and, you know, we always appreciate folks expressing their concerns so that we can address them and hopefully calm any sort of concerns or misconceptions. And the first thing I just really want to point out is we're not asking the board to grant approvals for any development whatsoever. All we're asking for is a modification of a lot line between two lots. So if that municipal boundary was not there, you know, this would be an application that's permitted by right. It would go straight to the planning board. But the existence of that boundary, the municipal boundary, doesn't change the present use of the lot. You know, Gino can access the lot as we're currently proposing right now because he owns both lots. He just wants to be able to continue doing that in the future if and when that front lot is sold off for the reasons that we articulated earlier. So in that sense, there's no change to the neighborhood if this variance is granted because all we're asking for is for Gino to be able to continue using the lot as he presently does if and when he sells that front lot in the future. You know, it would not be appropriate for this board to deny a variance because someone else someday might come in and ask for some other approval to develop some other project. You know, every single application has to stand on its own merits and anyone that comes in to develop anything, whether it's Gino or potential future owner or anyone else, has to go through the proper channels to develop whatever it is they're seeking to develop. And if that proposal requires zoning board approval, there would be another application before this board with a more concrete plan that would show exactly what was proposed out there and everyone would get notice of it and they would have an opportunity to speak about it at that time. But that's not what we're currently proposing. All we're currently proposing is a modification between two lots, a lot line that Gino currently owns, so he can get back there to do some low-key agricultural, personal use farming without having to traverse over one mile of terrain and three wetland crossings to do it. And it's really that municipal boundary that's causing the hardship. That's a unique inherent restriction on the lot that differentiates it from others in the area. That's the crux of the hardship analysis. We're only asking for the lot line adjustment. We're not seeking approvals for any development. And that's really the nuts and bolts of what the proposal is.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Corbett.
So you touched on a question I was going to go to and ultimately it started to sound like we kind of are playing both sides of the coin. So right now, the area to be adjusted is accessible and there will be no change really to his accessibility or the current use for it, we're saying. So I'm having a very tough time understanding a hardship due to the potential future sale. Because to me, if we're accessing it now, we're using it now, there's nothing to be changed. Not granting the variance wouldn't change that. Why not come before us after it's been in use for a number of years when the property's being sold?
Right. And so the reason I articulated why we're asking for what we're asking for goes to the individual reasons of the landowner. But individual reasons of the landowner are not relevant for purposes of the five variance criteria, right? The five variance criteria are based on the inherent restrictions in the land.
But again, what's the restriction if we're using it? You said, nothing will change. It'll be used the same way. So what is the restriction?
The restriction, the use will remain the same, ideally in perpetuity. The reason that use can't presently remain the same in perpetuity is because of the location of the municipal boundary and the way that it cuts off the frontage. So...
But today, he owns both properties and he can access both of them. So as long as he owns it in perpetuity, he can access both of them.
Right, but he may not always own both lots and variances run with the land. So again, it's not, you know, the individual, as the Supreme Court says, the plight of the landowner is not relevant to the variance criteria, although it can be helpful for background context, obviously. What the criteria really is about is the land itself, not the owner or the owner's intentions. And what it really comes down to most of the time is the hardship and the crux of that is the special conditions of the land that differentiate it from others. And the special conditions here are clearly the municipal lot line running through the middle of it and severing the frontage. And the second part of that analysis is, okay, well, owing to those special conditions, is there any fair or, you know, reasonable reason to impose this requirement strictly in this instance? That there must be 200 feet of frontage, not in total, but in dairy. And to that, we say, no, there is no reason to apply this specifically in this, strictly in this instance because, by way of example, the use is going to remain the same. There's not going to be any impact to the neighborhood. It's for a low-key farming use. And so some of that does start to work itself back in. But, you know, it's the uniqueness of the property that's important and we think this property is very unique. And the purposes that the zoning ordinance seeks to preserve in terms of requiring frontage in one particular town are not, are not at issue here if the variance is granted because it's still going to have all the frontage it currently has and it's not going to affect Gino's ability, at least to presently access the back portion of the lot.
Well, you do make the point that speculative, speculation beyond the ask is not relevant and the rights to progress property in a way that's legal remain not the focus of this board. But I do have some questions relevant to the easement question and I'm a little blind to the application. I'd like to, I'd like to study it some more myself before I render a decision. But do you have anything else you wish to add at this time?
Just happy to answer any questions if there are any further questions.
Okay. The board will note that we've satisfied the statute for public input and if nobody else has any other questions, we can consider going into deliberation. Like I said, I'm a little apprehensive on some questions right now, but they're not beyond being persuaded either. Mr. Tripp?
I have a question for the applicants. So what you're saying is that you can have a lot that does not have frontage on a road for, say, Laconia, and you can have that lot, a permissible, a permissible lot? Because as other people have said, that Drew Road ends at 96 Drew and it becomes North Salem. So how can you have a lot on 96 Drew that the road doesn't exist?
Well, that's exactly what we're asking the variant, that's exactly why we're asking the board for the variance. It's because the frontage is currently 500, there's currently 565 feet of frontage along Drew Road and North Salem Road for these lots. If you, I mean, if you look at the lots, they're...
Yeah, but most of that is on North Salem.
Right. But in terms of, and this is a bit of a technicality, which also sort of goes to the unique strict hardship criteria. It's a bit of a technicality because if you look at the lot, if you stand there and you look at the lot, part of it's developed in Hampstead, part of it's developed in dairy. They're technically two separate lots, but they're used cohesively. And so if you stand there and look at it, it looks like it's all one big lot and unless you're a surveyor, you don't know which town you're in as you walk it. Now, a person who's usually asking for a minimum frontage variance is typically asking for less than what's required, meaning I have 250 feet of frontage, but I want to create lots that have only 50 feet. You know, that's not what we're asking for here. We're asking for a variance to allow the lot to have frontage that is located essentially in the town of Hampstead, 436 feet of it, rather than in the town of Dairy. So we're not asking for a variance to create a back lot. And, you know, the purpose of frontage itself is primarily to have safe and adequate access for the homeowner, but particularly for emergency vehicles. And that's not going to change if this variance is granted. That's the hardship analysis in a nutshell. So yes, technically, will there be any frontage in dairy if this variance is granted? No. But as a practical matter, will there be any issues that flow from that? Will there be access issues? No. Will there be congestion issues? No. Will there be overdevelopment? No. Because everything on this lot's going to stay exactly the same way as it is right now.
So what's the address going to be?
It's going to stay the same. It's going to be what it is right now. There's no, the frontage has addresses, mailing addresses controlled by E911 at the state level. That's not going to, nothing is going to change.
I was wishing that the fire department was here tonight so they could chime in on this.
We're glad they're not.
All right.
Now, the address will remain the same and the lot will remain the same. I mean, in terms of where the house is and where the driveways are, you know, there's no proposed changes to any physical infrastructure on the lot. We're just, you know, shifting invisible lot line, one invisible lot line to allow Gino to get out back and do some personal low-key agricultural stuff.
Okay, all set, Mr. Tripp? All right. Anybody else have anything? We're all set. We could take a motion, go into deliberation if you'd like. I've had some apprehensions. Mr. Tripp makes the motion for deliberation. Mr. Corbett makes a second. All in favor of deliberations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Corbett, you have some thoughts? So you want to lead off with?
Yeah, as I was, you know, kind of alluding to in my last line of questioning, I have a very difficult time with the hardship on this, you know, even after the example's given. I mean, the technicality that's being listed, there's been no benefit listed as to why 96 would need to do this. You know, what I'm hearing is that the owner of 96 and 62 wants to continue to access this forever in case he sells 96. But we don't know he's going to sell 96. We don't know he's not going to sell 62. What happens if he sells that instead? Because he can get, you know, more money for a larger plot. Now, again, we're left with 96 with no frontage. You know, as this stands today, not granting the variance doesn't change anything. It's not that there's no access. It's not that, you know, he's, it's really just that. It doesn't change anything not to grant this. So I just, I do not see the hardship and why a variance needs to be granted here.
Okay. Mr. Dugani, any thoughts?
As I'm looking at it, it just looks like we're shifting a little bit so that most of the property is in Hampstead. Is that my understanding correct?
Yeah.
Hardship I don't see also, but I'm not sure where I fall on having it or not having it. I don't see...
Actually, correction. It does look like it's still more in Dairy, Hampstead, but yeah.
All set, Mr. Dugani?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions on it.
Okay, Mr. Tripp?
I agree with Mr. Colbert, that the owner of 62 already has access to the rear area. It seems that if, and owning, since he does own the 96 Drew property, he could put a road or an access in right now. So the, and as, you know, Bob Mackey said, you know, if you create a lot that has zero access, it's, or zero frontage, it'd be difficult to rationalize that being a proper lot. So...
All right.
I'm not inclined to approve the variance.
Are you firm on your thoughts on this right now or do you have question marks that you need to qualify?
Well, I would, I would be interested in, you know, someone else's opinion as to, you know, you having a lot which is, has no frontage and having it being a lot in Dairy as opposed to all the frontage being in Hampstead.
And looking through, and I know we saw what the code enforcements, you know, is the right word, interpretation of the ordinance is. And with that, I think that's kind of where we got it, why it requires the variance in the first place, is that it does directly impact the spirit of the ordinance. I, for one, would probably agree with the code enforcement kind of take on that, that the town of Dairy zoning laws would require a property to have frontage in Dairy, to try to state that it's unique. It would be very unique to have a property in Dairy with no, you know, all the frontage in a separate town. You know, I think that's the exact purpose of the law and the ordinance there. At least I'll, I agree with the interpretation, at least. It's how I look at it.
Okay. I'm sorry. So you're saying because they'd be cutting off all the property from having access in Dairy?
No, that it go, you know, per the regulations or the zoning code, that we need to have frontage and that they're stating we have it, but we don't because the town of Dairy zoning laws would be for Dairy. So now we're eliminating all of the frontage in Dairy. That is a direct, you know, that directly goes against the spirit of the ordinance and try to argue that it's ambiguous that the Dairy zoning laws require a Dairy interpretation. I also have a very tough, you know, and I know we didn't go down that road, but I think that portion of the argument, you know, to say that it's unique, well, that's kind of what makes the, I don't see that. I think what makes it then unique is having a property in Dairy with no frontage in Dairy because we adjusted it to leave all the frontage in Hampstead. And now, to Mr. Tripp's point, even though it's E911, we have an address that doesn't exist.
So that has been my issue as well. Well, one, the map being unclear to me, but that could just be me. But I would like clarity on, is this even going to be a Dairy address? If the lot lines moved, does it become Hampstead?
The driveway will remain in Dairy.
My belief, my, you, if you do the lot line adjustment, the 128 remains in Dairy, is my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
I... I believe in the discussions, and I've expressed already some apprehension about moving forward with a vote, because I'd like to check out some variations to this, as well as compare some of the remarks made. And as I have said for many years, if you've got a member that is apprehensive and not ready to make a vote, don't push the vote.
So it's the 128, this corner piece is going to be the access?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
But I still, I don't know, the map, it's, has a lot of extras, so maybe that's why I'm not-
All right, so where I'm going to suggest, as I hear more confusion on this, is I'd like to come out of deliberation. I'd like to table this to the next meeting, take some time to digest this. I'm going to have some questions for code enforcement to, to look into for us.
Can we request the before and after as well, just-
Before and after what?
Like what they have now, and then another, like how to separate?
It's very tough looking at only the final product without seeing, you know, normally we see, as it is today, here's our proposal, and instead, just to be presented with, you know, the final product is a very difficult read. I do agree with the board on that. I'm glad it wasn't just me.
All right, so how about an 11 by 17-inch display of the area prior and the current proposal? Does that work?
Yes, please.
Yeah. And we can do existing conditions and proposed conditions and have them on two separate sheets. That would probably-
We'll come back to you as soon as we come out of deliberation, all right? And prior and proposed, anything else the board would like to have? Seeing no gestures there? Okay. Protocol is to keep deliberation within the board. If that, if there's nothing else, we'll come out of-
Make the motion to come out of deliberation.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corbett to exit deliberation. Second by Mr. Tripp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we'll have that dialogue now. We have, you've heard those ideas, right? The 11 by 17, something that the board can see and, you know, get a better view on. And the prior proposal, I think you were alluding to that before I-
Yeah, we can separate them out into two sheets, maybe one that's existing conditions and one that's proposed with some colors and-
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Other than that, we'll see you at a date certain next scheduled board meeting, which is in a couple of-
Should be the fourth.
Sometime in September.
September?
Fourth.
9/4.
Most likely the fourth.
Fourth.
Okay. And you provide that to code enforcement ahead of time.
Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Should you, board pass a motion to continue?
Yeah. Have a motion to table this to the next meeting for September 4th, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table this until September 4th due to requests for more information.
Very good, thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Gentlemen, we'll have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case up is Birch, TDL Birch LLC. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Well, how are you?
All right, that's too bad. No pizza?
Pardon?
No pizza?
No, not tonight.
All right, well, you know, welcome back, Mr. Attorney-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, like it to be known that I'm going to not sit in on this one.
Very good.
Okay.
You were recused. Very good. Thank you. You want to step away?
I'll just-
You've announced your recusal, step away.
Okay, then I'll step away.
All right, very good. Mr. Jermaine, Attorney Jermaine, I'm sorry. You know our protocols, and please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Brian Jermaine. I'm here with Attorney Donald Blaska. We own 23 Birch Street. This is an application for a variance for property that we purchased at 25 Birch Street, which is adjacent to the property. I'll read the application. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The proposed use is consistent with the permitted uses in the CBD zone. The intended use is to expand a well-established business in the community by utilizing both 25 and 23 Birch Street. The zoning requirements in the CBD district require the construction of a building within the front eight-foot maximum setback, and that's why we're here. Such a requirement is inconsistent with the practical construction of an office building and parking for clients and employees. The essential character of the neighborhood is residential and commercial. The physical improvements would aesthetically enhance the neighborhood and replace dilapidated residential property with a quality professional office. The only variance we're asking for is to build outside of this eight-foot maximum setback. It's the first time I've ever done an application like this. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the new structure and appurtenances and the pertinent uses will be used in conjunction with the adjacent building. The professional office at 23 Birch Street has been used exclusively as a law office for the past 37 years. The lot abuts directly with the MHDR zone. The lot located on the edge of the CBD zone is not located close to the traditional downtown Derry. The use will have no substantial impact on abutters. There will be no encroachment on a butter lot lines, and there will be no need for additional variances. The improvement at 23 and 25 Birch Street will improve the traffic flow of South Avenue and site distances. The new building and improvements will increase professional employment opportunities for the community and expand the commercial base of the community. If you look at tabs five and six, you will see that there is a existing condition plan, and tab six has our proposed plan of constructing another office building on 25. And you'll see that we have changed the entrance patterns and such. Substantial justice will be done because the lot is approximately 0.25 acres. It is serviced by municipal water, municipal sewer, and natural gas. Property consists of a dilapidated structure. The applicant intends to demolish the structure and construct a building similar in structure on 23 Birch Street. The two lots will share parking and access. The intent is to eliminate the South Avenue entrance for 23 Birch Street and create a shared Birch Street entrance for 23 and 25. The immediate gain to the public is an improved traffic pattern on South Ave and Birch Street intersection. Consideration of the size of the lot, intended use and the character of the neighborhood, the variance request is appropriate. The value of surrounding properties are not diminished because the existing dilapidated structure will be demolished and replaced with an aesthetically pleasing professional office with functional appurtenances and accompanying professional landscaping. Therefore, the improvements will enhance the values of the surrounding properties while maintaining the character of the neighborhood and community. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the special application of the, of that provision to the property. The applicant's proposed use of the property is reasonable and consistent with permitted uses in the CBD zone. The proposed use meets all the size and dimensional requirements of the proposed use other than the front setback mandate. CBD zone requires construction within the front eight-foot setback. This is an unusual requirement and inconsistent with the neighborhood. The adjacent professional office building is setback over 30 feet, and the intent of the applicant is to construct a building within the same setback. The professional office is not a retail establishment, and foot traffic in the area is minimal. The only impact to the neighborhood would be improvements. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The proposed use is in the CBD zone. The intended use is a permitted use. The lot meets all the size requirements for its intended purpose. The property will be served by a new entrance for both 23 and 25. 23 Birch Street has been a professional office since 1988. The same use for 25 Birch Street is reasonable considering the proposed improvements in history of the adjacent property at 23 Birch Street. The special conditions that distinguish the property from others in the area is that the intended use is in conjunction with a neighboring property. It's a 0.25 acre lot with frontage of 90.95 feet. In order to construct a building within the maximum eight-foot setback, a larger and functional entrance for the, for the professional office building would be improbable and impair the reasonable use of the remaining lot. The request is to provide a functional setback. The setback requirement, as applied to this unique parcel, would prevent viable professional office development. The proposed development does not create any public safety or environmental concerns. We have engaged with Keach Engineering, Keach Nordstrom Engineering, and they have been working with us, and they're the ones that prepared the plans that are set forth in tab five and six. Tab number one is a copy of our deed. We purchased the property in 2024, and we looked at various uses for the property, and we felt that the best use would be to expand the property and build another building similar to what we have now, but two stories, really parallel to where our existing building is. This eight-foot maximum front setback is very unique to this particular zone, incredibly unique to this particular zone. And we were told by Mr. Mackey and, and George that we needed to get a variance if we wanted to build anything on that property outside of that eight-foot setback. Very unique request on their part, but they told us we had to get a variance to do that. And so our plan, as you can see from our proposed plan on tab six, is that we plan on, on redeveloping that whole particular area, and hopefully we'll improve the traffic flow in working with the planning board and with our engineer for South Avenue as well. That, if any of you have driven that, you'd know that it's kind of a crazy intersection. So the, the next tab is, is just the tax card. The next tab, we have tab three, is the, the lots from the GIS mapping. Lot 3005 is 25 Birch Street. Lot 3006 is our present existing lot. We use almost every inch of that lot for, for our commercial purposes. The next tab, tab four, is, shows the MHDR zone, which is in purple, which is a budding the, the particular lot and a budding our existing lot. And that has, I believe, a 25-foot setback or 35-foot setback for any development. And five and six, I've already talked about. Be happy to answer any questions you have. I think that this is a, an easy variance, considering the hardship to the property and considering the very, very unique eight-foot maximum setback in this particular zone.
Is there anybody here to speak from this case? Raise your hands. See nobody there? Very good. This is a leftover from Mr. Mackey, correct, Ms. Owen?
I believe so, yes.
Yep. And when you rebuild this building, it's going to be consistent with the building that you have currently, as I see.
The plan is to have it look exactly the same.
And you're not going to block off the, the current access onto the South Ave?
Depends what the fire department tells us to do.
Very good.
And we may have to put a bollard or a gate up, fencing, but that, our intention is to do that, is to have our main accessway on Birch Street. Where our address is Birch Street, and the address of the, for 25 will be Birch Street as well. But we, that's our intention, is to block that off or use it as a, some other entrance. But I think a lot of it depends on public safety and what the fire department may-
Yeah, so this acquisition took a while to get wrapped up. It was on the market for quite a while. I should think that's an attribute to your purchase of the property. I think it cleans up the neighborhood, and it'll make a lot of sense. Does make getting pizza a little easier, right? Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Seeing no gestures there. All right, let's make a quick call to public officially then. Anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this application? This would be your time to do so. We have some phone numbers there for anybody remote. Mr. Corbett?
Yep, anyone home wishes to dial in, 646-558-8656. Your meeting ID is 323-909140. Once you're in, you're going to press star nine to raise your hand. And if you're having any problems, please dial 603-845-5585.
Very good. Anybody here in opposition to this application? This would be your time to be heard. Anybody out there, Mr. Preventure?
Seeing an unrise at this time, Mr. Chair.
Very good. We'll consider that we've met the, the board has met the statute for public input. Any other information you folks wish to give us? Any questions for the applicant from the board? Mr. Obimba, you're on this case, as I believe I indicated earlier?
Yeah, I'm all set. We didn't get input from code enforcement, for the record.
Ms. Owen, anything you wish to add?
Nothing that was really previously stated. The one thing I did notice in doing my research is that 23 Birch was granted a variance in 1987 for the position of the building on the property, due to the parcel of land being on the corner. That one in particular was the side and the rear setbacks and allowing the parking on the front of the property. And obviously, that's what they're, they're wishing to continue for the adjacent property.
Very good. Thank you very much. Yosset, Mr. Obimba?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, very good. If there's nothing else, we take a motion to go into deliberation, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Obimba. Second by Mr. Corbett. All in favor of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I think I've made my position on this clear. I don't know if anybody else is in opposition to that. The property that, that has been purchased here and set for improvement is, was fairly dated, is a good way to put it, and I think this is a good opportunity to clean it up, have zero, little impact on the community services, and create more commercial office space. That's my position on this. Anybody wish to have a debate on that or add to it?
I think we're about to shave an hour off Attorney Jermaine's quickest case in front of us, so.
I do want to note that his before and after was easy to follow.
Okay.
And aesthetically pleasing isn't in the ordinance, but it, it is compared to what it is now.
Very good. Mr. Tripp? Yosset?
I'm all set.
Mr. Obimba?
All set.
Very good. Let's structure a motion. We have, subject to all town, state permits and inspections, anything else anybody wished to add?
Sure.
Hearing none. Let's take a motion to come out of deliberation, please.
So move.
Mr. Tripp moves that question. Mr. Obimba, you want to second that, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, affirmed by Mr. Obimba. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to read?
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-123 for TDL Birch LLC to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-33.C dot 4 of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the construction of an office building exceeding the maximum front setback. Parcel ID 30005, zoned CBD, as presented with the following conditions. We have one. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Motion's on the floor. Finding a fact, please.
Finding a fact for case 25-123. The board found that the applicant is requesting a variance to construct an office building exceeding the maximum front setback. Currently, the existing site contains a single-family home in disrepair that would be demolished to allow the construction of a new office building. The property is located in the central business district, which requires an eight-foot maximum setback to the front property line. The proposed new office building will be set further back from the front property line to allow expansion of the adjacent parking lot located 23 Birch Street and eliminate the existing South Ave entrance. If approved, the proposal will require a technical review by town, staff, and planning board for site plan approval. The reviewed will include items such as site lighting, parking, landscaping, buffering, drainage, et cetera. The board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions.
Very good. Concludes the finding of fact.
Does anybody have any additions or redundums?
Seeing no gestures there. All in favor of moving the motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All righty. First, Mr. Corbett.
Yes.
Mr. Obimba.
Yes.
Mr. Tripp.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
And the chair will make unanimous by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations, gentlemen. Your application's been approved. Anybody agreed by this, this 30-day, ask the board for rehearing. Otherwise recourse be Superior Court. Have a good evening.
Take care.
All right, next case up is case number 25-124, Dairy Plumbing and Heating. And good evening to you, Dave.
Good evening, board members. My name's Dave Benedict. I am the owner of Dairy Plumbing and Heating. As you know, I'm building a new facility on Schuhs Corner. Most of you probably know. And I need to put a sign up, and I'm trying, I would like to put up a two-by-eight LED reader sign, like I did down the street on my other, the other building. That's basically why I'm here, is just a- That's basically why I'm here, is just to get your blessing to hopefully do that. So...
Don't you read the five criterias? Do you have that on the application for us?
Yeah.
Stay with that standard.
So granted, the variance would be contrary to the public interest because the granting of this variance would not be contrary to the public's interest, is that the sign would help and promote the public interest. The application of Dairy Plumbing and Heating, Inc., intends to use electronic message board to provide public service announcements in conjunction with advertising for the business. The PSA shall include messages informing the public at various times of the year conducting maintenance checks and items in their business. This message shall include reminders for property, seasonal property owners to schedule annual maintenance inspection on boilers and furnaces on a seasonal basis. The message shall also include reminders to replace batteries and check the maintenance of smoke detectors as well as carbon dioxide detectors. In the spring, a message will be conveyed to the property owners to consider maintaining of the air conditioning units. The message is conjunction with messages related to the applicant's business will serve the public interest and will not be contrary to it. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because one of the proposed signs support the business and community vitality by informing the public of available goods, services, and activities. Another purpose is to address new technologies. The granting of this variance would promote both of the essential purposes in addition to informing the public that the goods and services available at the applicant's business relating to the plumbing and heating, that the message to be included, the non-commercial nature will also serve to inform the public of matter that promotes public awareness and public safety. As outlined above, in this included promoting regular maintenance of matters to protect the public in their home and business that might otherwise go unchecked. In this respect, promoting the purpose of this ordinance, literal enforcements of this provision of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. The purpose of this sub-paragraph, unnecessary hardship means that the owning to special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision to the property. Electronic message center signs are allowed in other districts, general commercial industry, et cetera, but not allowed in one of the most valuable commercial areas in the community. The specific application to the restrictions, no electric message board on the property imposes an unnecessary hardship for the business to be able to use the technologies, e.g. electronic message board, to promote the business and public awareness. Granting the variance will allow the message sign to be integrated into the sign for the business and promote public awareness. The request use is a reasonable use for the location and will otherwise promote public awareness and will benefit to the community. The sign will be located to such as to otherwise blend in with surrounding properties but allow the promotion of the messages that benefit the public as a whole. The purpose, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the proposed use is reasonable because the public service announcements is gained by allowing the message board. The applicant seeks to promote the business but also promote public awareness, which is, under these circumstances, should be deemed a reasonable, reasonable one.
Okay, so you submitted a drawing of plan?
Yeah.
And I see a red dot on that plan. Is that the location of the sign?
That's correct.
Okay. What is the size of the sign? Is 16 inches by three feet, is that correct?
It's two feet by eight feet.
Two feet by, oh, 16 square feet, correct?
Yeah. 15 square feet.
Any questions from anybody on the board? Thank you.
So is it a safe assumption that, I assume the sign's going to be updated from the one that you have at the previous location, but the messages are going to be consistent with what we've been seeing in the past few years of the sign that's existing?
It's going to be the same, same sign, same size, everything.
Same messages going across, same timing, same, what's the candle level? Is that the word?
Candle light.
Candle light, everything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Tripp?
I have a question about the overall size of the sign. The example you gave us, it appears that the message center is only a minor portion of the overall sign dimensions. It looks like the top portion of the sign, which is five feet by, I assume eight, is not going to be an electronic sign. It's just going to be...
Just the bottom part.
Yeah.
Just the very bottom.
And I believe that getting a sign involves more than us providing a variance for the electronic sign, right?
So say again that again?
I said, getting a sign for the business involves going to...
Ms. Owen?
What?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. So the only portion that we're proving is the electronic portion of it right now.
Or that means a variance.
So there'll be, yeah, a little more work for you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dietzel?
No questions at this time.
All right. The gas station across Street Speedway has electronic messaging, but they're fixed numbers. They stay relatively consistent over a period of time.
A period of time, yeah.
You have intervals that you'll be obligated to that change, I think it's every six seconds. Over to Mrs. Owen. Is that correct, every six seconds? Changing of the message?
Seven seconds.
It hasn't been burned into your brain yet.
Not yet.
Though I get the feeling it will be.
It will. Not less than five seconds.
Not less than five seconds, okay. But whereas your sign is going to be changing and the Speedway sign is not, it would seem significant that perhaps that sign should have a time limit on it as far as how long it operates during the day.
So the hospital, which is right next door?
Yep.
They're at their minimum changing time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm shutting the sign off versus leaving it on 24 hours a day.
Right.
And understand that the hospital's a little bit different, but whereas we're doing a comparison, you also have a plumbing outfit down the street from you that their time shuts off at a certain time of the night.
Dagle?
Yes.
So, yeah, they're on another road?
I understand, but I think they're in the same zone.
Okay.
They are in a commercial zone, by the way, I think.
Well, I'm not sure what the minimum is, but whatever the minimum is, is what we have at the current location, time-wise. But we exceed that anyway. We don't change it that fast. You can't, we usually leave them up for like two minutes and then we change them.
Okay. Mr. Corbett?
Will there be a time at night where the messages will no longer be shown? Like, would it be a safe assumption the messages may be up from, I don't know, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM?
No, 24.
What are your plans with that?
24.
24/7? Would you be, I think as, someone being alluded to with the difference with the hospital there, with the stagnant numbers across the street, I think the fire station looks like it may have it, but I'm not sure. Would you be willing to...
Fire station does.
Yep. Would you be willing to consider any type of timeframe as far as turning on or off the electric message portion?
You mean at night?
Yeah.
If, I'm not sure if the program will let you do that, but if it did, I would not have a problem with that. If it went off at 11 o'clock at night until 6:00 in the morning, I don't have no problem with that. Because everybody's sleeping, so...
That's all my thoughts.
Yeah, I'm thinking 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
But just so you know, where I'm at now, there was none of that.
I understand.
And it's not that way with the hospital. It's not going to be that way with the fire department. I'd rather not do that, but if you guys tell me I have to, I will.
I think the thought, the fire department, at least for me, fire department, hospital, I can, not that what you do isn't important, I can see the need for that one, you know, almost 24/7, especially as people approaching the hospital have an idea of what's going on. You know, this one, I would feel, at least personally, I'd feel good with some type of timeframe within it, especially, I think this is a second or possibly third variance on the property to this point, and I think it's a great development, but as we continue with, as the asks come up, I think a concession could be helpful, but that's just my two cents. So seemingly willing, we'd probably just have to see if the system can handle it and then kind of put some hours in place, but that would be my, a condition I would want to lean towards if this were to progress. I appreciate you kind of introducing that.
The only thing that would concern me is if you shut it off, because when you program all the things, if you shut it off, you're going to lose all those programs. That's the only thing that would concern me.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
What's that?
Could you speak a little closer to the mic? I can't hear you.
So if you shut it off, I don't know if it's going to like lose what you programmed on there and have to reprogram it all again the next day. I don't know. I really don't.
Well, we do know and this is becoming a growing trend.
I know.
But it's also got to have some limits to it and understanding where you're at, you're kind of coming into this zone that's working against residential versus some of the other areas and there's a consistency issue. I think that electronic messaging signs are still trying to feel their way into the environment and there are a lot of places that still don't want to accept them and I can understand why. Some of the point being that, just a conversation recently, we don't want it to start looking like it's Las Vegas and you're getting in more to a sensitive location of the community. Being it's commercial, but you're trending outside of that area that you might otherwise think would be commercial.
So let me ask you a question. You guys just approved one of those signs on Hampstead Road?
Yep.
100% residential area.
Yep.
How could you do that and then question what I want to do over there?
Well, by statute, one is not a precedent for another and the hardship definition is different. And understanding that, I think the basis of that decision is a very difficult position because you have something on a property that is, has had no, was a church and has, what are you going to do with it? They've had multiple developments come to it and they get shot down because it's just very little, that's a good fit there.
Mr. Chair.
So we're not telling you no.
No, no, no. I just thought it was, I was just bringing it up as an example.
Not there is precedent, but what I would note, there is a similarity between the two, but if you were to look at the two, one concession that they did make, as I went over a few cases, was the timing of the signs going through. I think they switched it to, I want to say 20 or 30 seconds in between each one rather than the less than five, but then also put hours around when it would be going on, mainly to kind of keep that in mind for the residential character of the neighborhood and so that there wouldn't be, you know, someone, I think the thought, someone in their window at night and just kind of seeing it flashing through when it's dark.
Yeah, but this is all residential houses that are there that's going to see that.
And by the way, there's, they expanded the time limit of changing, so it's greater than 20 seconds. I think the final was like five minutes. They changed the message.
Five minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that. That's fine. That's what it is.
That's the danger of bringing up past cases.
If they change it to that, then I can't say nothing about it. It is what it is.
Shouldn't anyway. Ms. Moore?
So it says backlit with LED lighting for the other part of it and it says in the OBD that it cannot be internally illuminated. So with that...
Mrs. Owen, you want to help us out here?
My interpretation is that this is the OMBD district, OMB, so it was Office Medical there and then the OBD is separate. So I did read that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I have a question for the applicant. Sir, could you explain, under the hardship provision, what is unique about your particular property which would make literal enforcement of this ordinance? How would that cause a unnecessary hardship? In other words, why do you need an electronic sign as opposed to one that would conform with the ordinance?
Well, I think I read off all the stuff.
Yeah, but is there anything unique to this particular piece of property other than your, how it would enhance you economically?
Well, it would help economically for us and also with safety reasons, like smoke detectors, you know, all stuff like that. People getting their furnaces cleaned, they forget and that's kind of can be a hazard. Many people have a lot of problems because they just neglect taking care of their furnaces, their boilers, just everything to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, Mr. Dietzel offers a fair question, which is that hardship question. And sometimes it can be answered in various different ways. Sometimes I wonder where electronic messaging signs are going to go and where they start, what they're going to evolve into. And sometimes the enhancements in competitive nature create the hardship that somebody might seek. Competitor down the street has had this sign, a lighted sign with electronic messaging for about four or five years now.
Yeah. Also noted in 5B, the need to distinguish itself, Mr. Bergen's point, in order to promote that service related to the plumbing and heating, so I think it was a good question, but they did kind of spell it out for us.
Anything else, Ms. Benedict?
No, I mean, one question from Mr. Benedict. I mean, knowing, I think the general feedback so far has kind of been, you know, really the timing issue on it and not necessarily the timing between the messages, at least for me, but more so on the hours of the day. I understand the concern about having to reset. Now, I'm more familiar with the Daktronic sign. Do you know, is that what Turn 1 Graphics is putting in or you don't know what type of electronic sign it'll be to this point? Because what I would almost be willing to do is, I don't want you to have to commit to something right now that you would then turn around in however many months and realize this is a huge pain in your butt. You know, that every morning you're having to reprogram a system and do X, Y, and Z. You know, I would almost feel better for you if we were to pause this, allow you to go back, kind of gather that information to be able to provide to us, you know, so you can speak very confidently to exactly what it can do. And perhaps it's not really much of an ask from the board to do that if it's as easy as, you know, we just flip the switch, you have a timer, it automatically turns back on at 7:00 AM. But at the same point, I don't want you to commit to it today and then realize, wow, we can't do any of that. Would that be something that...
So I'd rather just say, okay, I'll shut it off at 11 or 10 and turn it back on at 7:00.
You'd just be comfortable with it?
I'd just rather do that. Because if you think about it, it's like a computer. If you shut your computer off, I assume you're not going to lose, you're not going to lose all your information, so I assume that that sign is the same way.
Yeah, it should be, I would think it's stored somewhere on a computer within the system and then it'll feed in there, so you can also update them simply. But I just wanted to propose that to you, just knowing that it's kind of, at least feels to me almost of something that you might want to consider, so that was all.
No, I'm fine with shutting it off. I really am.
Okay. Understanding that you're in the same service as your competitor, I believe that timeline is 9:00 PM to shut it off.
What?
The electronic messaging is 9:00 PM.
I didn't hear you.
For the remainder of the American Home Service's time. A lot to say...
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, the electronic messaging shuts off at 9:00 PM.
That's fine.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
What time, what about if I was turning it back on?
7:00 AM.
You can do 6:00. A lot of traffic going by there at 6:00 in the morning.
6:00 works for you? 6:00 to 9:00?
I think 6:00 to 9:00 is fair.
Okay.
Covers sunrise at the early, you know, kind of at the earliest and dusk at the latest throughout the year.
Mr. Dietzel, how does that sit with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Tripp, Ms. Moore?
I think that's reasonable.
6:00 to 9:00?
Yep.
That's fine.
6:00 AM to 9:00 AM?
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
All right, just testing you. All right.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Benedict? All right, let's make a call to public, okay? Anybody here wish to speak on this matter, plus or against? Seeing no gestures there, let's advertise the phone number and just go through the normal protocol. Miss, Mr. Preventer? You have those phone numbers?
Gotcha.
Yep. And Mr. Corbett, thank you.
If anyone home who wishes to dial in, you're going to dial 646-558-8656, and your meeting ID is 323-909140. Once you're in, you're going to press *9 to raise your hand, and if you're having any technical issues, you're going to dial 603-845-5585.
Good, thank you, Mr. Corbett. All right, we'll make it official. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this op, this application, this would be your time to come forward. Likewise, anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this matter may come forward at this time and be heard. Seeing no one rise within the room, anybody out there at all, Mr. Preventer? Very good. Then we will consider that the board has met the statute for public input, and if Mr. Benedict doesn't have anything else to add. I had, Mr. Corbett brought up the term graphics. This is, this sign is strictly lettering, is that correct?
Correct. No pictures, no nothing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, I don't know, showing cartoons or something like that. That's one of the...
No, I already made that mistake.
The description they listed of what, what they're proposing matches the applicant's application.
Very good. Mrs. Owen, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that being said, we've heard from public, so let's take a motion for deliberation, please.
Someone?
Mr. Tripp makes a motion for deliberation. Mrs. Moore, you want to help out?
I second that.
You did, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Moore has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections, hours of operation...
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
And... On the sign, I'd like it to be letters or numbers only stipulated. I don't see that specifically there, do you?
No, it just says, uh... Message.
Is images a good thing to reference? No images?
I think so.
No images. You have that, Mrs. Moore?
I don't.
Okay, well, we do now, all right? Okay, so the three, three conditions to the motion. Anybody have anything else? Seeing no gestures there, all right. We can come out of deliberation if we'd like.
Can I see yours? Did you, you did it, that's what you went through?
I can have a motion, come out of deliberation.
Is there any discussion that needs to take place? Everyone good?
I think so. I, I've, I asked. You folks all set? Okay. All set. Take a motion, come out of deliberation.
Make that motion.
Mr. Corbett, Mr. Tripp has a second. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-124 for Dairy Plumbing and Heating, owner 71 Birch Street LLC, to grant a variance to the terms of Article 12, Section 165-101.11 of the Town of Dairy zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a 16-square-foot electronic message center sign, parcel ID 28002, zoned OMB, as presented with the following conditions. We have three. Subject, one, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. Two, hours of operation will be 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Three, sign is to have letters and numbers only, no images. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Motion's on the floor. Now the finding of fact.
Finding of fact for case 25-124. The board found that the applicants are requesting a variance to install a 16-square-foot electronic message center sign. The applicant is currently constructing a commercial service establishment, has received site plan approval from the planning board. The property is located in the Office Medical Business zoning district. The installation of the electronic message center sign is currently permitted in the general commercial, general commercial 4 and industrial 4 zoning districts, which is why a variance is being sought. If approved, a condition that the electronic message sign operates in accordance with Sections 165-101-11, with appropriate, appropriate signs and permits will be required, along with the additional, additional conditions mentioned. The board also includes all facts found on the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Does anybody have any additions or addendums to make?
No gestures there. All in favor of moving this for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Dietzel?
No. I don't see where there are special conditions for this property that distinguish it from other properties that would make literal enforcement to cause an unnecessary hardship.
Very good. Mrs. Moore?
Chair, a vote yes.
And the chair will make a yes as well, makes it by a vote of four to one. Mr. Benedict, you've been approved. Anybody agreed by this has 30 days to ask this board reconsideration. After that recourse will be to Superior Court, okay?
Thank you.
Good luck. Looking forward to seeing that building done.
Coming along very nicely.
Mr. Drogani, you want to sit on this for us, please?
Sounds good.
Yeah, you're good?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Parker, case number 25-126, Classic Signs Inc., welcome. We ask you to read your application for the record.
All right.
As it's presented, at five criteria, and then we'll ask you questions.
All right. Uh, wonderful. Just to state for the record, my name is Justin Parker. I work for Classic Signs. We are representing the Blue Seal at 3 Martin Street. We are requesting relief from Article 12, Section 165-101.11, to allow an EMC to be installed in the CBD district. Now, let's go through the five, five points of law. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because with the constantly changing products and sales that this business is offering, this EMC will provide a way to change those offerings safely and effectively. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because this EMC would assist in advertising the changing special offers for this business to the maximum amount of feasible people possible in a safe and reasonable manner. Substantial justice is done because the proposed EMC will provide an alternative to the manually changed reader board that is located next to the street, which is much safer for the employees. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished because the sign will only be operating, only operational during business hours, and the sign is not changing its use. The sign will also be replacing the existing pylon in the same location. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship, or no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of this ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Due to the size and nature of this business, the continual changing sales and products being offered have to be posted frequently. With an EMC, the messages can be changed remotely without having to take the risk of changing a manual reader board. This would require a ladder, and given that the sign is near the street, any opportunity to increase the safety of the employees should be taken. The post-use is a reasonable one. There are already EMCs allowed in the Town of Dairy, just not the zone. The property does not front West Broadway and will not disrupt the character of a main downtown street. The purpose of this sign is to provide advertising for this business in an effective manner, which is consistent with the purpose of the ordinance. And then I have some other notes I'd like to add. The, the closest allowable zone, or the closest distance that we would be able to install the sign would be anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 feet to get to the GC4 zone, which is located on the same street and the street behind it, and there's no other EMCs that are going to be visible from it, from that location, so it's not like there's going to be a wave of EMCs that is taking over the CBD district. And we understand that there is some apartments right next to it, and that's why we only want it open during business hours. This business does close relatively early, about 7:00, so the sign might not even be on at night for a good portion of the year. All right.
How far back from the main street edge is this sign going to be?
It's going to be replacing the existing one that's there right now. We're not getting any closer. We're actually using the existing poles. We're just going to wrap them in wood, so there's going to be no change to the location of that right there. I believe it's probably about eight, eight-ish feet, just by looking at it. Because I think that's a walkway right there and not the street.
Yeah, I was actually looking at Broadway itself.
Okay.
It's behind where it's like the farmer's market is.
Yeah, so I'd say probably about 30 feet, maybe even 40.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any questions from the board?
What are we thinking about the, or can you further explain the creative freedom for the advertisements that this is going to allow for?
So for this advertisement, you can pretty much just treat it essentially like a monitor, so you can put whatever you'd like up there, instead of just like the, like the EMC that's in front of the fire department, where it's just the, like you can only put text, it's just like a LED dot matrix. This is an RGB, it's more like a computer monitor than it is like a, like the gas station sign. That's what most of the modern ones are. So if you wanted just plain text and minimal things, we can do that. And if they'd like to add whatever kind of, like say, for example, if the checks are going on sale for the spring, maybe a nice Easter egg kind of thing, light it up, but of course, that's completely up to the board's discretion.
And I guess, second, thank you for that. The second part, before I turn it over, it looks like the, the electronic message sign portion is about a third of the totality. Is there an opportunity to shrink that a little bit?
Um, the, so we don't have a ton of freedom when it comes to that, because the, the EMC company that we're using, and we're doing a rebrand of all of the Blue Seals in the Northeast, so we have to stick with one manufacturer pretty much. The tiles, they only come in a certain size, so that'd be one portion, and then you buy a matrix of those tiles. So it's a however many tiles by however many tiles. This wound up to be about six by four, and then that fit with the existing sign that we have to use.
Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, you have anything?
You, you provided us with some examples of what the sign would look like.
Yep, and I have... Go ahead, sorry.
The, it appears that the, the sign is going to be what, almost four foot by six feet?
Yep, the EMC.
EMC, and, and the rest of the sign is going to be fixed, lettering?
Yep.
So...
Yep, internally lit cabinets with vinyl applied. And then the, the middle picture, I'm not sure if you all have this, but this middle picture is what it would look like as a night view, so that, those are all the parts that would show when it's lit up.
But you've already said that the night view is going to be off.
That's only if it's on, if it ends up being night.
Oh.
Yep.
Because what, what exactly are the operating hours of Blue Seal?
Um, around 8:00 to 6:00.
Say again?
8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So, all right, so I, I don't believe that there's going to be any nighttime, you know, operation of the sign. Right, so 8:00 to...
Uh, 6:00 PM.
8:00 to 6:00 PM. And you anticipate there being graphics on that sign?
Um, I personally do, because that's generally what has been happening with all the other locations. They, I'm not sure how, how centralized their branding is. I'm not sure if they just get a thing from corporate, or if they have to make it, each portion has to make it themselves. They're just now starting with the EMCs, so I'm not sure if they have any framework for that. But if they did need to create their own content for the sign, that would be very easy for them to do.
Yeah. Well, I think you, you might have noticed that in the earlier cases, that we, we, we promote letters and numbers only, you know, and the, the refresh rate on the new messages is restricted also. Is this something that you anticipate this sign being used for?
Um, the changing messages?
Yes.
Um, yes. And we have full control over how often those messages cycle. We also have control of the brightness, so if it ever comes up that the people living in the apartments, or I think you guys might be able to see it from here, when it's lit up, if any of them have a complaint about that, it's easy enough for the store owners to just dial down the brightness a little bit.
Uh, you mentioned that the, there are apartments that would see the sign. Now, are those apartments across Broadway, or are they across, uh...
Uh, they're across Manning Street.
Across Main Street?
Manning Street.
The stores that are across the street, like the hair cutting place, they are up there.
Yep. This is us there.
So that, so it's, so the sign would be facing across the, the road that it's on?
Um, the sign would, I believe, front, it would be parallel to West Broadway Street, and it would be perpendicular to Manning Street. I think it's like facing Rigatoni's.
All right, so, so the, the apartments that would be seeing the sign would have to be across Main, uh, Broadway.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, she's gonna speak, we'll have to have her come up to the mic, okay?
Uh, so the apartments will be across Manning Street. They won't be, they will get some of the sign light, they just won't be directly, they just won't be directly facing the sign.
Looking at where it is, Mr. Tripp, I think it would likely be more like facing the Sabatino's dining crowd, based on the, the current sign today.
Do you know where Sabatino's is?
I do.
Okay.
But that seems to, uh, be contrary to, uh...
The Manning Street?
What?
To what the, the owners of Blue Seal said.
The Manning Street apartments.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the orientation is not directly facing the apartments, but they will, it does, it is right near there, so there's...
Okay.
There's going to be something like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, I have a quick question.
Yep.
So the middle part that you said, it's black, is what's going to be lit up?
Yep.
Where it says Blue Seal and the farmer's home?
Yes. Yes.
Is that going to be LED or is that going to be just backlit?
Uh, these are internally lit by LEDs, so it's not going to be an EMC. It's just going to be a regular channel letter, just a regular sign cabinet.
Okay, excellent.
I also have a view of one of the ones that we've installed already. Just give you, like, what it's going to look like.
Did you install it upside down?
Upside down.
Thank you.
See, it doesn't look like there's a messaging sign on the bottom.
Um, that got driven up today.
Oh.
He got what?
Uh, that got driven up today.
Drifted off.
They haven't finished it yet.
Oh, oh, got it, okay.
That was a poor example then.
It was a size difference.
Anybody else, Mr. Dietzel?
No, thank you.
Okay. I guess I have one more question. So, so this is a one-sided sign though? The back will not be illuminated?
It's a double sided, right?
It's what?
I believe it's double sided.
Okay, well, that was just a, I would assume that it would be double sided, but you didn't, you had never mentioned that.
Um, the EMC would be double sided?
Yep.
Mr. Obimba, anything? I think one of the things that concerns me is, is its location. And one of the things that we have dabbled in in past cases are distractions. And I can only imagine going down Broadway at a very busy crosswalk that provides passage for bicyclists, and then somebody catches an image of a cow off of the side.
And has to announce to the whole car that there's cows.
So you're looking for this to operate 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Yep.
And you've offered no images on it, just text?
Uh, yes, I will offer that.
Does that defeat the purpose?
Um, I don't think so because the main, the main goal is just to stop them from setting up a ladder right next to a street in order to change the reader boards. And if it turns out that we can't put graphics on it, that, that, that's perfectly fine with us.
Sure, here, my opinion on that.
Mm-hmm.
So the way I, similar thought, and that was kind of where I had early, especially looking at the cow on here. A couple of the notes I had was, I thought it was a good point about the safety improvement. You know, it's one that we haven't heard before, and you would think more people would almost use rather than putting their employees up on the ladder at a thing. But personally, just looking at the two signs, it looks sharper. And the way I look at it is, these letters quickly looked, at least in my opinion, quickly looked terrible. Like when one lender falls down or you get one that's discolored and, you know, everything that you drive by and see. To me, the original thought on an EMC is, you know, the evolution with time, you know?
Right.
In 30, 40 years, if we even get that far, you know, why are people still going to be looking, you know, who's going to be coming up with a manual sign and kind of putting that letter in, letter by letter? I think, I do think where we kind of want to rein it in is your point of, and I think it's great, this looks, again, it looks excellent, the photos of the cow looks great. But to Mrs. Morin's point, I know my kids are going to scream, "There's a cow out my window." And then, you know, what's going to happen as you're going? I think kind of keeping it two letters, numbers, to me, it's a much needed improvement on all signs, but I think that's really what I would have as my concern overall.
And I agree with that. I feel if we limit it to letters and numbers, we're going to keep a better grasp. And I know we can't compare future or past, but I think it just makes sense to keep it simple. And I love cows, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Anything else, Mr. Parker?
Um, nope, that's all I have unless anyone else has any more questions.
Okay. Well, let's make a call to public. Uh, or I'm sorry, Mrs. Owen, you want to help us out here?
Um, I don't think there's anything I really, any new thing that I need to add to this, other than just as the applicant was describing, this proposed sign would be replacing the existing sign in its exact location, which is set back quite a distance from West Broadway and visibility. And right now, with that park along West Broadway and the landscaping is thriving, I know that that doesn't occur all year round, but right now, there's not a lot of visibility from West Broadway to that location.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, let's make a call to public and see if there's any input there. At this time, we'll make a call to anybody within the room that wishes to speak in favor of this application. This would be your opportunity to come forward. We have some phone numbers there. Mr. Corbett, you want to share them?
Yep, anyone at home who wishes to dial in, you're going to dial 646-558-8656, and your meeting ID is 323-909140. Once you're in, you're going to press *9 to raise your hand. And if you're having any technical issues, you're going to dial 603-845-5585.
Very good. Seeing no one rise in the room, anybody in opposition to this application, this would be the opportunity to come forward and be heard, and seeing no one rise. Thank you, Mr. Preventure. All right. Okay, so we've met statute for public input. Anybody have any other questions? Mr. Parker? Okay, I guess we can take a motion, go into deliberation. Mr. Dragani, you want to help us with that?
Sure, I mean, when you, when you look at the sign and the design?
No, no, you have to make the first.
Oh, motion, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. Bottom rookie mistake.
He has to take the gift though, so we can just skip him.
Yep. My motion.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second, please? Mr. Corbett has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Corbett, you want to lead off?
Uh, no, I kind of said my piece in the public session. I think, I think it's an improvement. I think it looks very sharp. I think that, you know, kind of my, my opinions on an EMC versus the manual lettering is clear. I do think the concessions suggested by the board are kind of necessary to keep this at just letters and numbers. Appreciated the offer up of the store hours of 8:00 to 6:00. You know, outside of adding those conditions, I would feel comfortable moving forward with this.
I am, I agree, but I would like to extend the hours just maybe like 8:00 to 8:00, so they can take advantage of like dairy after dark and all the foot traffic that's there for the farmer's marker, market, I can't, so.
I gave support of that. 8:00 to 8:00.
Certainly with that permission, that would be up to the applicant to determine if they didn't want to leave it on that long, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Not to exceed 8:00 to 8:00.
Yep, all right.
So what are the operating hours?
Uh, suggested 8:00 to 8:00.
Their operating hours are 8:00 to 6:00. Mrs. Morin's point was different events that take place in the area could prove as an additional benefit if we gave it an extra two hours.
Is that agreeable with you, Mr. Tripp?
I was just wondering why it went to 8:00 to 8:00 because I thought we'd agreed that it was going to be 8:00 to 6:00, but if you have a rationale to do that, that's fine with me.
I think the board understands the promotion of commercial, and Mrs. Morin made a decent point that there are some activities in downtown Derry at times that having that opportunity to, well, in this case, you really weren't familiar with the sign itself, right? So...
Well, I, I don't normally look at the sign because I'm not a big customer of the Blue Seal except for pellets, for my pellet stove, you know?
All right. Mr. Dragani, you all set with those conditions?
I would only, I want to say that location wise, I wouldn't be opposed to having pictures. I understand everyone else's thoughts, but I don't feel like where it's located, it's one of those places that it would have to just be lettering, but that's my opinion.
Well, we find that there's erring on the side of caution and understanding that the need for promotion as well, for commerce. I think that this became a happy medium, and whereas Mrs. Morin and Mr. Corbett can both identify with children yelling out about a cow, I think there's some caution there.
I think to, to Mr. Dragani's point, you know, as I mentioned, evolution and kind of the way it goes, I think that this could also offer up the opportunity that if, if these signs evolve to the point where we start to see images, you know, more common, you know, in a few years, they can always come back and ask for the revision to that condition.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I just thought that when you think about the signs, the biggest part is about flashing signs and the rotations is what works, extends out the worst, you know? If the sign had, you know, dairy after dark and had some sort of logo on it, I don't see how that would have been, you know, obstructive or stuff like that. So like limiting logos and stuff like that helps in branding.
Right, not like a dancing cartoon character or something, yeah.
It's not motion, not a motion picture.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have that motion all constructed at this point?
I think Mrs. Morin does.
Yeah, I have. The hours of operations are not to exceed, and then for the third, it's the same verbiage as before, sign to have letters and numbers only, no images.
All right, that being said, I guess we can take a motion, come on a deliberation. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Can I have a second, please?
I second.
Mr. Dragani seconds that safely, and all in favor of coming on a deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Uh, you have a motion to read, Mrs. Morin?
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-126 for Justin Parker of Classic Signs Inc., LLC, owner Kent Nutrition Group Incorporated, to grant a variance to the terms of Article 12, Section 165-101.11 of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a 23.5 square foot electronic message center sign, parcel ID 30046, zoned CBD, as presented with the following conditions. We have three. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. Two, hours of operation are to not exceed 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Three, the sign is to have letters and numbers only, no images. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Tripp seconds the motion, puts it on the floor. Mr. Corbett, you have a finding of fact?
Yep, finding of fact for case 25-126. The board found that the applicants are requesting a variance to install a 23 and a half square foot electronic center sign. Property is located in the central business zoning district. The installation of electronic message signs are currently permitted in the general commercial, general commercial four, and industrial four zoning districts. The proposed electronic message center sign will be incorporated into a new pylon sign which will replace the existing sign at its current location on the property. And if approved, we have three conditions that were read into the record. The board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Does anybody have any additions or addendums to make?
Seeing no gestures there, all right. Let's move this, all in favor of moving this, that motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Mr. Dragani?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mrs. Morin?
Yes.
And the chair will make that unanimous by a vote of five to zero, so congratulations, Mr. Parker, to your applicants. You've been approved by a vote of five to zero. Anybody agreed by this decision has 30 days to ask this board for re-hearing or otherwise recourse to Superior Court. Okay, very good, thank you.
Good luck.
We have three more cases on the agenda for the evening. For Chelsea Ewing, I don't know that we're going to hear you tonight. Are you here? All right, if you'd like, we can dismiss you to the next meeting, or you can take your chances and that we get to you, but I, we end at 10:00, so do you have a preference there?
Um, I'll wait, and then if you have a vote, we'll use the next, and we'll come to the next one.
All right, it's, the next one is September 4th, so it's not that far away. Next up is Locke... Oh, boy. Nguyen? How'd I do? All right. All right. Barely, have you talk right into that microphone, okay?
Yeah, so my name's Locke Nguyen. I live on 9 South Main Street, Dairy, New Hampshire, so, yeah. So I'm going to start by reading my application.
Thank you.
So this is application conditions. The applicant claims the dwelling unit as her has legal residence, yes. The residential use was established by the applicant prior to the filing of the request for special exception. It was established on November 14, 2023. The proposed home business will not be injurious, noxious, or offensive to the neighborhood by reason of emission of odors, fume, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, or other cause. It will not. The home business will be conducted within the residential district or other existing structure and will not exceed 25% of the finished living area of the dwelling. It will not exceed 25%. The home business will, use will not change the residential character of the dwelling or the property. It will not change the residential character. Not more than one sign or other advertising device will be displayed on the property and it will not exceed three square feet in surface area. That's correct. Not more than one person not residing in the dwelling unit will be employed on the premise at the same time. Total number of non-resident employee is zero. Sufficient off-street parking will be provided for the employees, clients, and customer. Where lots permits, the parking will not be provided within 25 feet of the front line lot or within 10 feet of the side or rear lot line. Not more than one home business will be conducted on the property. That is correct. And that ends my list of conditions.
All right, so why don't you go ahead and tell us a little about yourself?
Yes, so I am looking for open accounting business at my home, mostly payroll, tax preparation, and bookkeeping. Most of my clients are buying apartments and online, so there won't be a lot of traffic. I have two or three parking spots in my, in front of my house, off-street, and within the requested, required dimensions. And I operate four days a week on regular days, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. During tax season, which is about 10 weeks a year for me, I will operate six days a week, same time, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And that should be everything that covers it. Any questions?
Mr. Corbett?
Could you define the 10-week status tax season?
Yes, usually my, my tax season starts from beginning of February and ends April 15.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Mr. Obimba, would you sit on this, please?
I will, sure.
Uh, anybody else, questions?
Did you, I guess I have one.
Dietzel, no.
Thank you.
Was it, is it just you, the sole employee?
Yes, I'm the only one working, sometimes my wife possibly, but she's also resident, so that, no employees.
Thank you.
And that's a tight, tight home.
It's a small size room.
And, but you'll have enough room there for vehicles, dropping off paperwork, documents, that kind of thing?
Yes, I did the measurement, and it's within the 25 feet from the lot line.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tripp?
Is there a sign already?
No, I was waiting for the approval before I start a sign.
Okay. I think you have to go to the code enforcement to get a sign.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'll get the permit for that.
I noticed on, on item number eight, sufficient off-stream, sufficient off-street... off-street parking. Uh, you're on, uh, South Main, right?
Yes.
Now, do you intend on having your customers park on South Main?
Well, uh, from the conditions, um, I assume that they could only park within that restricted, uh, area. And usually it's by appointment, so I don't expect more than two, two cars at once. One or two cars.
So they would be parking on the, uh, is there parking spaces on South Main in that area?
No, it's off, I have off-street parking as well and it's, uh, right in front of my garage.
Oh, so you would be, uh, cause I, I went online to, to, to look at this and, and you're actually, your, your driveway is off another street, I think it's, uh, is your driveway on South Main?
Yes, that's my address and it's, the driveway is right in front of my address.
Oh, where's, uh, all right, well, but I.
You need the photos, Mr. Tripp?
You look on, um, Google Street and it shows.
Where's Mr. Owens? Oh.
All set?
Yeah, Mr. Google had given me the wrong house. Do you wanna see this?
Uh, any other questions? Okay, well, let's just make a call to public then. You don't have, or Ms. Owen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, this property, as we're aware, is located in the medium-high-density residential district. Um, professional service businesses are permitted, um, by special exception, so that's why we're here this evening. Um, as the applicant explained, we usually utilize an existing first-floor bedroom, which is approximately two-hundred-and-sixty square feet out of the residence. Um, and the driveway can accommodate, uh, you know, two to three additional cars off-street for parking for clients.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a call to public. Uh, anybody out there who wishes to speak, uh, to this application? Is there anybody in the room that want, wants to speak to this? Seeing no gestures there. Uh, we have some phone numbers there. Mr. Corbett?
Yep, anyone at home who wishes to dial in, you're gonna dial six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-five-six. Your meeting ID is three-two-three-nine-zero-nine-one-four-zero. Once you're in, you're gonna press star nine to raise your hand. And if you're having any technical issues, you're gonna dial six-zero-three-eight-four-five-five-five-eight-five.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Corbett. Again, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application, this is your opportunity to come forward and be heard. Uh, anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, this would be your opportunity to be heard.
You have one?
We have one, yep. Uh, Mr.?
Winn.
Winn, would you step back and we'll let this gentleman speak and you'll have an opportunity to rebut.
Hello? Hi, good evening. Uh, my name's Don San Antonio, I live at twelve South Main Street, approximately across the street.
Okay.
Um, last time I was here, it was thirty years ago doing this for a similar thing. My biggest concern is business. It's a residential area. Once you open that door for business, it's gonna spread. And that small patch of twelve South Main Street is historical. There's historical houses there.
Huh? Where the new home is?
Yeah, in that whole, there's about thirteen houses in this small residential swath of South Main Street.
Yep.
They're historical houses. The original Dairy School Village, Dairy Village School is a house now, but it was, it's, all these houses are in a historical book in Dairy. Once we open this for business, then there's gonna be, the next person's gonna be coming in, coming in, business, business, business. That road cannot sustain business parking the way it is. The traffic builds up in that rotary half a mile sometimes.
Mm-hmm.
Now, when, I've got people turning around and my driveway as it is, just from regular traffic, if people overshoot this business, they're gonna, if they're heading south, they're gonna be turning around in my driveway or the neighbor's driveway, and now I've got a nuisance. I've had to have cars towed out of my driveway because of people turning around in there. And it, it's a big fear for me when these businesses one starts. And there's plenty of retail and office space in this town to be rented and run a business. You just approved a new office building on Burke Street. That's another office. So where do we go from here? Where does it stop at the residential areas, you know? I, I'm afraid once this one goes in, then I'm gonna have Joe's Landscaping down the street and there's gonna be lawn mowers and trailers and then Phil's Bar and Grill and another one. It's, it's a big fear. And then what happens? I know the town has to improve, but old houses and historical houses also need to be thought of, you know?
What I would, what I would say to that, and completely appreciating your fear on it, you know, the floodgates open and that's always the fear, the way I would look at those two especially is, this one rather than the other cases tonight is a special exception versus the variance, whereas, I think what you, and Ms. Owen, probably correct me if I'm wrong, but if landscaping, a bar, kinda any of the real, not that your other ones weren't fears, but the real ones, the big ones.
Yeah, I'm afraid it's gonna lead to.
Those, those would come in and have to need a completely separate, like that would be the variance where you're kinda going under the scrutiny of meeting the five criteria, you know, why does a bar have to be right next to your house? Why couldn't it be on the middle of main, you know, actually on a main road? For this one with special exception, especially for these houses in the area, it's basically one of the types of, uh, jobs that is allowed to be worked out of a house and that is written into the code, but what they, basically what we do is we have them come and ask for permission prior, just so it doesn't turn into, like you said, you think you're on a residential lot of one.
Trying to make sure doesn't happen, cause, you know, what if during tax season there's ten cars parked out there? Then what do I do? Or what happens if they're all parked up the road? You know what I'm saying? That's a possibility. That's a good possibility that could happen. Yeah, you're saying one or two, but, you know, what you say here and what really happens down the road is a big difference. And I know that, cause I've seen things like that happen.
So, to that, so, right now what we've got is, uh, conditions he set forward to us, you know, operating between ten AM, six PM, the Monday to Thursday, and then just that window where it opened up more. If this were to go forward, would you feel comfortable if they're put in, you know, a condition of by appointment only, perhaps? You know, by appointment only, rather to avoid that scenario of, you know, that type of backup?
That would be better if there's, you know, one person at a time showing up. I could tolerate that.
Mm-hmm.
But when, if, if things aren't put in place like that, then you're gonna have people pulling up, showing up early, sitting in their car, getting things ready, pulling on the side of the road, half hour before the appointment or something, you know? It's, it's gonna be a nuisance over there, cause that, people, I've lived there for thirty-five years. They wanted to make my house into a day, dentist's office and the neighbors shot that down. They're all dead now, but they did shoot that down, thank God, cause I wouldn't own the house. Now, people coming out of that rotary, sometimes they're hitting fifty miles an hour. I'm out mowing my lawn and, so it's, could be a nuisance that way if people don't know exactly where this is and they're trying to turn into a small driveway. Sometimes I get killed trying to turn into my driveway, you know? I'm trying to get home and it's, you know, it's a, it's a gamble. So now we're adding more stuff like that that I think could be a problem or tumbleweed. That's what I'm afraid of.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Owen, where does the MHDR end? Do you know that, relative to this property? I just wondered offhand, uh, yeah, the superintendent's building is no, is not too far up, I think two houses up from this. You had a daycare on the same side of the street or something in a, um, multifamily.
Oh, where the condos are or apartments are.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, then, and eventually you get up to, uh, Dairy Plumbing and Heating or, um, the heck is the plumbing supplier there?
Oh, is it B&amp;S or something?
Across the street?
Uh, well, up the street, a little further.
You said the pawn shop and, yeah.
Over by Dairy, yeah.
Uh, anything definitive there, Ms. Owen, or not?
I can't quite.
Make it out.
Fair enough for me. Uh, it is, it is further south, um, on South Main Street, but I, I can't quite see the lot numbers on this map size, unfortunately.
Yeah, and it's not too far from that. You had the seafood place and then the gas station. So it's, it's a pretty unique, uh, area, uh, zoning-wise and understanding that it's just busy there a lot. Uh, I can attest to Mr. San Antonio's comments about the, uh, volume of traffic there, particularly on a Friday at four-thirty.
It's, uh, B&amp;G.
B&amp;G, I'm sorry, and I should know that too, by the way. So it's a unique area. Mr. Corbett, uh, addressed some good points there, uh, as well, um, by appointment and, um, and I don't honestly see that house as a, as a property that there's going to be a line of cars outside of it. Um, because it, where it's a residence, it's, uh, specific, it's gonna be specific to being received. A, a, a commercial property with a glass front, you know, might likely have a receptionist at it, uh, that's going to, um, always be there, somebody can just walk in freely off the street. That's really not the case when you're looking at a residence, um, situation with a special exception, um, to operate.
In the world of technology too, I'm sure a lot of things are scanned and emailed and done online, so that eliminates.
Hmm. All right, well, those are some reflect, good reflective, uh, commentary for the applicant. Um, anybody else out there wish to speak in opposition to this? Nobody out there, Mr. Preventor?
Mr. Chair, seeing none, rise online.
All right, well, then, uh, we'll, uh, declare that we've, uh, met the statute for public input, um, and, um, ask Mr. Hugspow, is it me?
Winn.
Winn, Mr. Winn, uh, come back up. You have an opportunity to rebut any of the comments that, uh, your neighbor has made. Mr. Winn?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, address his concern, um, any of his concern. Um, I've been doing this business for a while now, about five years, and I know my clients, I know who, how, what to expect during tax season. So usually it's one-on-one, there's no lines. I can almost guarantee there's never a time there's more than two cars, uh, or two clients waiting for me. Cause I, I have a set schedule that I give a, a copious amount of, um, time for each client, so I make sure they don't line up.
Well, anybody coming, uh, around unannounced, uh, you know, on the letter you provided, kinda, and I noted this after I, uh, suggested it, but you stated that most of your interactions occur online or by appointment only, so is that fair that anybody who's visiting won't be dropping in freely, they will be there as, you know, you will be setting who will be coming in when?
I mean, of course, you can't say there will be never any walk-ins, I, I can't guarantee that, but usually if there wa- there is a walk-in, they will either set appointment or they will just drop off and leave right away.
Would, would you be listing this as, as a business office or is it, it's your residence, correct?
It's my residence.
Yep. So is it likely that people would just walk into your home unannounced?
No, unlikely.
All right. Okay. Uh, anything else, any other questions for Mr. Winn? Mr. Obimba? Nope. Mr. Tripp, you all set?
I'm all set.
How about you, Mr. Diesel, you good?
No, thank you.
All right. Um, anything else, Mr. Winn?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, good enough. Uh, that being said, we can go on, take a walk into deliberation. Mr. Obimba?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Obimba makes the motion, can I have a second, please? Mrs. Moore?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Moore, and seconds, all in favor of deliberation, say aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, anybody wanna lead off?
Yeah, I think, you know, as I kinda mentioned, um, during the testimony out there, looking that, always different when we're looking at the special exception versus the variance. You know, I feel with the special exception, it's more of a matter of, does it check those boxes? Um, whereas variance, you know, we're really able to kinda give it some good amount of scrutiny. I think for this, for an accountant, uh, business going in, I think that it clearly meets, uh, the parameters for the special exception. I don't see really any way that we kinda go against that. I think, uh, the conditions offered up as far as the operating hours, um, the days of the week, the tax season, the February to April fifteenth, you know, opening up to six days, and the by appointment only are really conditions I'd like to see added. Um, but otherwise, you know, just specifically bound to what a, a special exception entails, I, I cannot see a concern regarding that, but, um, definitely appreciate, you know, the concerns about what it could, the concerns from the abutter, you know, really, and I understand frustration of people getting in a driveway too, so.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, see, Mr. Winn just continued to operate as a good neighbor, which sounds like we will be, and I think with those conditions, this could help kind of remediate those.
Issues?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, anybody have anything else they wanna add? Mrs. Moore?
No. I agree with what has been stated for, um, to help the abutters.
Okay, and Mr. Tripp?
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Obimba?
It checks the boxes, uh, I think it's a reasonable request. If we get to a point where we have more than two vehicles, I think it'll be a good sign that he needs to move the business from the home to a commercial spot.
Okay. Good enough, thank you. All right, um, I think our motion is all structured here, we got the two conditions, so, um.
Can I have, I just, for the wording, the business will operate ten AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, with the exception of, what was the time?
Monday through Thursday?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's.
That's three conditions?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, with the exception of tax season, which was defined as February through April fifteenth? And what should be Monday to Saturday? April fifteenth.
May I speak?
With the exceptions of tax, which is February through April fifteenth.
May I speak?
And.
All set? Okay, three conditions, and with that, we can come on deliberation.
I'll make a motion to come out of deliberation.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Obimba seconds that. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, uh, before we.
I think you wanted.
Yeah, so you all set, Mr. Winn?
Um, I was gonna correct, um, six days a week is, uh, every day except Friday.
Oh, sorry about that.
I didn't mention that before, I'm sorry.
Then it will be up to six days a week. Wanna just leave it like that? Or put with the exception of Friday at the end? I don't.
All right, um, you wanna operate when again?
Um, I close on Fridays only, um, during tax season.
Friday, Saturday, uh, Fridays only, so Saturday, Sunday, you'd be working as well?
Yes.
And is that during February to April fifteenth as well?
Correct.
So it's just basically your six days a week by appointment only?
Yes.
Okay. Does that work for you? All right, so we can make that amendment on this?
Yeah. So it's just six days a week by appointment, or six days? Okay.
Yeah, during that time period? Were you opening up overall, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, again?
Were you opening that up overall or just during that tax season?
All right, that's, is that what, your hours, is that what you wish for, uh, throughout the year or is it just during?
Just for tax season.
Oh.
Yeah, he listed ten to six, Monday through Thursday, outside of tax season.
Yeah, and.
Monday through Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Making a mess of the motion here.
Want me to sum set it too?
No.
I'm a tax liability, so I have nothing to say.
And six days a week, February. And six days a week, February to April 15th. Okay. You got that, February to April 15th?
I do.
Okay. Okay, very good, we're all set. Motion's been amended, and you have a motion to read, Mrs. Moore?
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-127 for law T. Nguyen to grant a special exception to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-45.D of the Town of Dairy Zoning Ordinance to Operate an Accounting Service Business at the Residence. Parcel ID 37114-001, Zoned MHDR, as presented with the following conditions. We have three. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. Two, the business will operate 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, with the exception of tax season, which is February through April 15th, and then it will operate up to six days a week. Three, by appointment only. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second, please.
Mr. Obimba?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of, well, that motion's on the floor, so, Mr. Corbett, you have a finding effect?
Yep, finding effect for case 25-127. The board found that the applicant is requesting a special exception to operate an in-home accounting service business at the residence. The property is located in the medium-high-density residential zoning district. The types of home businesses permitted by special exemption in this zone specifically include lawyer, doctor, clergyman, real estate agent, insurance agent, or other similar recognized profession or business. The proposal would utilize an existing bedroom approximately 13 feet by 20 feet, reaching 260 square feet on the first floor of the residence. The existing driveway can accommodate the off-street parking for clients, and if a sign is requested, a permit will be required. The board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application, and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Does anybody have any additions or items to make?
Seeing no gestures there, all in favor of moving this for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Corbett?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Chair, I vote yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Obimba?
Yes.
And the chair will make it unanimous by a vote of five to zero, so anybody has, may be offended by this, has 30 days, ask the board for reconsideration, okay? And you are approved. Okay? Have a good evening.
Buck?
All right.
Five minutes?
We have five minutes left to the meeting. Mr. and Mrs. Dickerson, I think that we would be better served to have you come back on the fourth, sorry to do this to you. I thought we would possibly get to your application. I think, Mr. or Mrs. Ewing, I think you see where we're at at this point, so we can see both parties back on the September 4th, and you two will start off the evening, okay?
Sorry for the delay. Hope we otherwise entertained you guys.
Do we need to make a motion to table those two?
Yeah, we do, thank you, Mr. Obimba. Mr. Corbett, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to table case number 25-128 for the September 4th meeting, and case number 25-129 for the same date.
I'll second that.
Very good. Motion made by Mr. Obimba to post, to table those to the next meeting. Second by Mr. Corbett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so those are affirmed. Other business, we have approval of minutes. We need approval, I have an email from Mr. Burgess, who cannot be here tonight, he is accepting of the minutes. We do have the minutes for 65, 2025. Do we, a motion to accept those as presented?
I'm gonna, I wasn't there, so I'll abstain from voting.
On 65, you weren't there? Mr. Corbett was. Mr. Burgess was. Mr. Dragani sat on that as well. Any changes or amendments from any of those parties?
No, I accept them as they were.
I also.
As presented today.
Very good, thank you. All in favor of presenting those as, accepting those as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved. We have amendments to the minutes for 619. Did everybody see those?
Yes.
Any objections there?
Hope I approve those as well.
Okay, very good. I need a motion to accept those as amended.
Make that motion.
Very good. Mr. Corbett has that motion, could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore was there for that. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We have the minutes for 717, 2025. Does anybody have any corrections on those?
It's not here that day, but I did see there were some red lines that were passed around.
I'd like to table those. Can I do that? Can we table those on the 17th? Yeah. All in favor of...
I'll make a motion.
Tableting those minutes from July 17th. Have a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to table them from July 17th.
Very good.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting.
We have two, I believe, just two variance applications. One's a special exception, sorry, and a variance, request for rehearing, and a request for a variance extension, and then the three that were tabled from this evening.
Okay, busy night.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, and if there's no other business for the board from its members, we can take a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Corbett.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dragani, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, have a good night.